All set?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the October 10th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. Call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will have a quorum of Planning Board members here. There Felix Lopez said he would be a little bit late, but we also have one member, Bob Malvarosa, who is not able to attend tonight. So I'd like to appoint Kevin O'Connell to serve as a voting member for tonight's meeting. And also, I'll just note that the 2025 Planning Board meeting schedule has been posted. And so that's on the town's website, if anyone wants to take a look at that. And I think all the Planning Board members received that. I would like to ask the Planning Board for its indulgence to add an additional agenda item to the agenda tonight. That would be to consider an additional agenda item at the end of tonight's meeting to consider the zoning interpretation, which the Planning Board received from Joel Petrus, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, on October 3rd, 2024, regarding ZBA application number ZB 24-004, Heritage Financial Credit Union sign at 1476 Route 9D. Would someone like to move that?
So.
Second.
Jody moves it and Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that's six votes in favor, I think, without Felix here.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we're missing Felix and we're missing Bob. All right, so we have a new submittal tonight for the Old Glenham Road, two lot subdivision. The applicant is proposing to subdivide an existing 1.62 acre parcel into two lots for the purpose of legalizing pre-existing non-conformities. Lot 1 will consist of 0.48 acres and the construction of a new single-family one-story framed house is proposed and shall be accessed by an existing driveway. Lot 2 will consist of 1.14 acres, contains an existing two-family residence that is used as an office, a general commercial yard, and a detached garage that is the primary place of an electrical contractor business and is also used by the applicant as a secondary place of business for his construction company. Applicant proposes to remove the existing commercial structures on Lot 2 and convert the two-family home to a conforming, single-family home. Applicant seeks to fully legalize pre-existing non-conformities by obtaining subdivision approval from the board. The parcel for this proposal is identified as tax parcel number 6055-16806431 and is located at 40 Old Glenham Road in the R15 zoning district. And this will be to consider referring the application to the town planning, sorry, to the town Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, and the Glenham Fire District for review and comment. The board will allow informal comments from the public after the discussion of this application. Welcome, Mr. Glad. And if you could just briefly describe what this application is about?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman. Alec Glad from the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. I'll be very brief because you already covered a lot of it. Also, it's not very complicated. It's just a simple two-lot subdivision of an existing 1.6 acre parcel. As noted, it is located in the R15 district. Presently, on, here's the existing condition. It contains a two-family residence with office and also a general commercial yard, which is the primary place of business for an electrical contractor, also the property owner stores some of his construction business equipment and materials here as well. But through this residential subdivision, we're seeking to legalize all these non-conformities. All the commercial structures will be removed. The two-family home will be converted into a conforming, single-family residence. And then on the new lot, a three-bedroom, conforming, single-family residence is proposed to be constructed. The driveway for the new residence will come off Tompkins Avenue. There's an existing curb cut there and it'll just be improved with a driveway.
All right. Are there any questions from board members? I had just one question about Tompkins Avenue, if you might know. Is this a town official road or is it a private road?
That I do not know for certain.
Because it definitely does not seem like it's a county road or a state road. It doesn't go through anywhere. That could be an important question as we proceed, just for purposes of, well, we probably will want to refer this to the town highway superintendent in case it is a town road because he would have to approve the driveway connection. And also, if it's a private road, by any chance, that could raise other questions about frontage for Lot 2 on a public road. But anyway, we can figure that all out later. We don't need to know that all tonight.
Yeah, certainly. And as long as Tompkins Ave is a, if it is private and approved road shown on subdivision plat, then it would provide the frontage Lot 2 would need.
Okay. So. All right. Any questions from our attorney, Dominic Cordisco?
No, sir.
All right. All right, well, at this point, let me see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments about this proposal. If there is, could you please raise your hand so we can see if anyone is out there? Doesn't look like it. All right. So we will move along. Is there a motion to accept the application for the proposed two-lot subdivision at 40 Old Glenham Road and to refer this application to the town Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, and I will add Town Highway Superintendent and the Glenham Fire District for their review and comment?
Someone?
Second.
Felix moves it. Was that Fred seconding it? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So of course, we'll have a more complete discussion at our next meeting. And after, we'll have input from our consultants at the November 14th meeting. Any other questions for you?
Nope. Just for a two-lot subdivision, just so I can go back to our client, what's the overall kind of timeline and process generally?
That's hard to say. I mean, it's, as you say, it should be a simple two-lot subdivision. But we've said that before with simple two-lot subdivisions and sometimes they don't end up so simple. But I mean, you know, there would normally be a public hearing involved.
Yep.
Do you have to get waterhouse approval?
Sorry?
Yes, so the new lot will be septic, but water to both is municipal.
That's something waterhouse. We've been waiting for that for a long time for a lot of things.
Well, not necessarily for our approvals. Sometimes for, you know, signing of a plat, but that's a different story.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Sure. All right, the next item is a request for extension of approval. This is the Healy Hyundai Lot Line Realignment and Second Amendment Site Development Plan Board to Review the Submissions Made by the Applicant's Representative on September 23, 2024, which requests extensions of the following approvals. And the first one, I won't read it all, but the first one is basically the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for the Lot Line Realignment. That's requesting a six-month extension and Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval, Second Amendment Site Development Plan. That's a request also for a six-month extension. So, welcome.
Good evening. Matt Deister from the Healy Organization. So we're here tonight just to ask for an extension. I know we were here back in April. We're just about to the finish line, roughly 98% complete. We had Mr. Bodendorf come down, take a look at things. We have some plantings left to finish. The DOT was just completed and signed off. So we're here basically, more importantly, on paperwork and legal items just to get in-line surveys so we can then present to Debbie for circulation for Mr. Cordisco to review the lot line changes.
I'll just note that Jody Burka has recused herself from this item as she has in the past.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from board members?
No.
Or any comments from our consultants regarding this proposal?
No comments. I would recommend that the board consider granting the requested extension.
All right. All right, I'd suggest, I think, as we've done in the past with separate approvals like this, that we do this in two separate motions. It'll be quick. So first, is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Lot Line Realignment Approval for Healy Hyundai to Septem, sorry, to April 12th, 2025? Would someone like to move that?
Someone?
All right, Felix moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brad seconds it.
I'll second.
Fred seconds it. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes, one abstention. All right, so that carries six in favor and one abstention. Is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Second Amendment Site Development Plan Approval to April 12th, 2025?
Someone?
All right, Bradley moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. That carries six to zero and one abstention as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a comment from the public?
No, we don't. We are not taking comments from the public on any of these that don't otherwise require it. The next item is project reviews. The first item is Fish Gill Self-Storage, 1292 Route 9D, Draft Environmental Impact Statement, DEIS, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Planning Board Discussion of DEIS Comments and the Memorandum by CPL and Consideration of Extension of the Date for Filing of a Final Environmental Impact Statement, or FEIS, as per Section 617.9A 52. All right, so first, let's go to CPL. And I think in particular, Liz Axelsson can help us with the memo that's dated October 3rd, 2024 regarding the DEIS and FEIS process. So that'll be just the first. That should be a fairly quick item to just run through real quickly.
Oh, just process right now. Do you want me to go through comments or no?
Well, yeah, but first, I'd like you to go through the memo that just talks about the process a little bit.
Sure. So we've been through many steps with the SEAKER review, beginning with a SEAKER Positive Declaration, Determination of Significance, continuing October 2023, working on the scoping outline, and then receiving a preliminary draft environmental impact statement in March of 2024, which was reviewed. And then deficiencies were noted. And the board determined the DEIS to be incomplete in May 2024. Revised DEIS was submitted June 26, 2024. And it was reviewed for what we call completeness or adequacy and was found to be adequate and complete as per board action on July 11, 2024. After that, it was circulated to involve the interested agencies and made available to the public. And that was all done by notification and circulation. It was also made available on the town's website for members of the public to review. And also, our office reviewed the draft environmental impact statement. And this time, this DEIS stage of review, so the public understands it wasn't just about completeness or adequacy, like, did they cover all these points? This was about the actual substance of what was stated in the draft environmental impact statement. So this stage was more about commenting on whether there was agreement with or an issue with what was in the draft environmental impact statement and stating those issues. And let's see. So the board has received a very hefty set of comments from our office and we did try to tie that together with the format of the scope and the format of the EIS, Draft Environmental Impact Statement. So, public comments were received through September 12th and then the board extended the DEIS public comment period for 20 days to October 3rd. And also, very importantly, there was a draft environmental impact statement public hearing. And that was held on September 12th. So, and we have received quite a few comments. I know that Planning Board Secretary Debbie Colonna had very diligently gotten comments out as they came in. And I had documented comments all the way through, I believe, September 30th. And then there were more that came in since then. So when I had written this memorandum dated October 3rd, there were 21 sets of comments and I believe at least six more came in. But I'm not sure. It may have been more than that. Anyway, so where we're at now in the process is that a final environmental impact statement must be prepared or must be caused to be prepared. And typically, that is done by the applicant's representatives. So actually, we do have a timeline coming up very soon. That is because under the regulations, the SEAKER regulations, a final environmental impact statement has to be prepared within 45 calendar days of the close of the DEIS public hearing. And the date from September 12th to, with adding 45 days, would be October 27. And that was going to be in between this meeting and next meeting. So I wrote in my memo that an extension of the final, of the filing of the final EIS is allowed under the SEAKER regulations. And I recommend that the Planning Board consider this option tonight to come up with an extension. And of course, I defer to Dominic how he feels about that. So I think that kind of gets us to where we're at now. Did that cover all the procedural points you wanted to touch on?
Dominic, did you want to add anything just to the process part of it at this point?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. This is an odd provision, actually, within SEAKER regulations, at least as it applies to the scenario that you have before you, which is where an applicant, you know, is going to be trying to address the concerns and comments that have been raised regarding the project at the DEIS stage. If this was a project where, let's say, like, you know, the town itself was doing an environmental impact statement regarding a town project that the town was doing, well, then, you know, the obligation to have that FEIS prepared within 45 days would theoretically apply. It's an odd provision, given the fact that the, you know, the time should be given to the applicant, right? So that they could revise their plans. They could try to be, prepare as full a response as possible. And I'm sure that they're going to work diligently on preparing an FEIS. But, you know, the 45-day timeframe is something that, it's kind of meaningless in a way because it doesn't result in a default approval. It's not something that, you know, that can be looked at to the board. And just to be clear, like, the applicant's preparing in an initial draft of their FEIS, but it will become this board's document. And it only becomes this board's document when you're satisfied with what's being presented before you. So it's something that, in my practice, that I've tended to not pay too much attention to because as a result, like I said, in most cases, it's an applicant that's preparing that document. And there's no consequences to not complying with it. Liz was very diligent, however, in bringing this up and mentioning it. And I think for tonight's purposes, if the applicant would just acknowledge on the record that they're preparing, they will submit whenever they submit. And otherwise, the timeframe doesn't really apply. I think we're probably good.
And one other thing to add is that once the applicant prepares, it's a weird terminology, but a draft final environmental impact statement.
Yes.
Then the Planning Board will receive it and take it and do what we think is necessary to complete it as an actual final EIS, which we'll adopt.
Correct. And unlike, you know, a draft environmental impact statement where there's specific timeframes for the board to provide their comments back to the applicant as to what needs to be done, that doesn't exist with the FEIS. Because at the end of the day, the FEIS becomes this board's document. It's in a very simplistic way of thinking about it. The DEIS is kind of like the world according to the applicant as it relates to their project. But the FEIS becomes this board's response to the comments, your own comments, comments from the public, comments from your consultants, and trying to, you know, make sure that the project mitigates its impacts to the maximum extent practicable. So that's why there's no timeframes associated with that, really. But then there's this odd provision in SEAKER. Larry Weintraub, best man in my wedding, also is SEAKER attorney at DEC. You know, we've had a number of arguments on this point and others. But nonetheless, he wins because he gets to, you know, write the code.
Mr. Glad, would you like to add anything to that discussion?
No, just to acknowledge Dominic's comment on process, we're preparing it and need obviously more than the 45 days.
Yeah.
While you're up there, do you have any idea how long it will take to complete the preparation?
Aaron Werner, excuse my raspy voice. It's a lot of steam tonight. I don't really have a time plan for you. We have all the comments. We just got them, including Liz's memo. So we're compiling them. We're categorizing them. And we're gonna, we're starting working on that response to comments. So I don't really have a date, but we're obviously beyond the 45 days we need. But we will try to give Liz a heads up when we're ready.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so now that we've gone through the process items, I'll ask Liz to go through CPL substantive comments on the DEIS. And that'll take a little bit longer, I think. But don't go through it in detail with a fine-tooth comb because there's a lot in there. But, you know, just kind of highlight what you think is going to be some of the more important, larger, bigger picture items that the Planning Board should be aware of.
Okay.
Could I just quickly ask?
Yep.
Just a comment on the feedback from the public for the, I mean, I read the transcript that Debbie sent out. It was excellent. It contained everything. I didn't read, I think, every single comment that might come in after that. But was there any comment that was in favor of this development?
I, of the public comments I read, I didn't see any of that one.
I didn't see anyone at all.
In favor? I haven't read the last, I don't know what it is, six or so, that came in late.
Yeah, I don't think there is any.
And we'll get a better sense of all that more specifically when the responses to all the public comments are submitted as part of the draft final EIS. And that'll document it all. Okay, Liz, you want to go ahead?
Sure. I'm going to refer to sections of the comments and then just paraphrase a little bit. So I'm looking at, this document is basically kind of like the scoping outline adopted November 9, 2023, which has been updated and formatted to provide CPL DEIS substantive comments dated October 3. And I'm going to page 3, Comment C4, which is the Project Purpose Need and Benefit section. And it inaccurately describes the proposed use as a limited business. And I believe that that was intended to make the proposed intensive business use seem less intense based on the language from the code for the RB or Restricted Business Zoning District, which states uses that are intended to include residential uses in a non-residential zone with limited business institutional and recreational uses which are appropriate to residential areas. And then I took a look. I spent a lot of time looking through the code and trying to figure out if I was reading the logic correctly. out if I was reading the logic correctly. So in the non-residential use tables, and what that means is, if you, if you're looking at the zoning code way at the end, there are these big, long use tables, one is non-residential, one is residential. And if you look at those use tables, self-storage facilities is a special use permit that is only permitted in the three most intensive non-residential use zoning districts, which are PSC, Planned Shopping Center, GB, General Business, and PI, Planned Industry. I'm not gonna go into detail there, but basically, there's a progression in the non-residential land use table where the three least intensive non-residential zoning districts are first, and that includes, that includes the LHC, which is the historic commercial, the RB, the restricted business in which this use is located, and PB, which is Planned Business. So the first three are the less intensive, and none of the first three zoning districts include self-storage facilities. And you can browse those and get a sense of what the character of those areas is. The last three, as I identified, PSC, GB, and PI, are the most intense, less restrictive, and less limited business zoning districts allowing uses of greater intensity. So that argument, it was presented in many places in the DEIS, and of course, you're gonna see that argument in a number of places in my comments to kind of square things up, depending on what section it was in. And then there's a paragraph where I talk about, another section in zoning that talks about the increasing intensity of zoning districts. Zoning Section 150-8, Classes of Districts, illustrates a progression from the more restrictive to less restrictive in the order of the non-residential districts, which basically, again, is LHC, RB, and PB, followed by PSC, GB, and PI. So it progresses that way. So, so that was, one of the main points is to try to familiarize the reader and comment about the logic of the zoning. Let's see. The other point I was trying to make had to do with the character of the proposed self-storage use. So there's a paragraph at the bottom of page five, comment C-8, which corresponds to DEIS Section E2A, and it's noted that there's two restrooms in this, you know, pretty large building, including one ADA restroom, and they're proposed for customers and two employees. It's a 333-unit self-storage facility. So I, I just observed that the need for only two restrooms kind of points to the fact that there's very little to no interaction with, or visits from the public or community. It is, you know, it's a storage place, it's a warehouse with individual spaces allotted to 333 users or households who visit, I'm guessing, infrequently, once you put your stuff in a storage unit, you might go back there once a month, that would be, I think, a lot for most people, or several months would go by. So there isn't a lot of interaction with the public. Only two staff persons are needed to serve this operation with 333 units. And I'm guessing that a part of their role is basic cleaning and refuse removal tasks, checking surveillance videos, selling boxes, tape, et cetera, for people that are there trying to organize their materials in their storage unit, and some assistance with administrative things, although I'm guessing, when you rent a storage unit, you can definitely do most of it online. And I guess my overarching conclusion is that the operation of a self-storage facility results in very little or minimal social interaction, it doesn't enhance community activity in general, and this is why self-storage uses are appropriately located in more intensive non-residential zoning districts, rather than near a neighborhood where this one is located. And it might just be one more point, I'd like to summarize, and Jonathan, if you think I haven't touched on something, let me know. One of the DEIS sections, I'm reading from the bottom of my, the comments, page nine of 25, comment D6 pertaining to DEIS Section B3A, effects on general land use patterns in the study area. And again, this DEIS section starts by noting that the restricted business zoning district does not specifically list self-storage as a primary or specially permitted use. In fact, self-storage isn't permitted at all, or listed at all, in the RB zoning district where the proposed self-storage is located. So it's not, oh, they didn't happen to list it, it just really isn't listed there. And the things that are listed in the RB, just so that the planning board's familiar with it, include any use listed in the R15 residence districts, so those are residential uses primarily. And those include one-family detached dwellings, building structures and uses owned or operated by the town, public structures, public schools, farm uses on a lot of at least two acres, and there's restrictions on that. And the RB permitted uses via the R15 district include one-family residential, public education, municipal facilities, small low-nuance farms, small-scale agricultural. So these are all residential, agricultural, or community-oriented uses consistent with a nearby pattern of land use. The RB district's special use permits include some commercial uses, but they're all kind of more oriented to interactive types of uses, such as motels, hotels, resorts, recreation and cultural activities, and restaurants or other places serving food or beverage, professional offices, medical and dental clinics, congregate care facilities. So I characterize these as entertainment or community business or services for residents or visitors, or they're places of employment in the vicinity of neighborhoods where people And all these would be consistent with the nearby pattern of land use. The proposed self-storage use isn't allowed in these districts because it is an intensive business use that would be inconsistent with a nearby pattern of land use, it would be out of place with the blend of all the other uses that I've just described. So I conclude that the proposed action is inconsistent with and would have an adverse effect on nearby land use patterns. And then I'm just looking at the next comment.
Actually, if you go back to page nine, if you wanna highlight where you start with comment D4, and then you're talking about the characterization of adjacent and nearby land uses, so maybe.
Oh, right up there at the top?
Yeah, if you can just go through that a little bit more, that's, I think that'd help set the context of.
Yeah, thank you, because I was having trouble finding that, even with my glasses on. So part of the DEIS point describes the, the land uses in the surrounding area, which is appropriate, because this is a land use section, and it was very, you know, it was very well done, it was detailed. So one of the things that I focused on is the northern portion of the land use study area, and in DEIS subsection B1B, it was described as a mix of transportation, residential, and commercial, which I felt wasn't accurate, and the reason is, I looked at their map, and then I looked at the land uses, and I started poking at different parcels and saying, what exactly is that? And the overall description of land use in the study area should have indicated medical care and congregant care. So I took a look at that map, and within this delineated one-quarter-mile area, the predominant land use is actually residential, that is the biggest land use area. The next largest uses are recreational, the golf course, and transportation, I-84 and Route 9D. And after that, the next largest land area would be service uses, medical, office, and congregant care. And the smallest area in the land use study area would be commercial. There's a gas station, and, let's see. The commercial uses that are there include the pre-existing non-conforming gas station, it isn't permitted in the RB zoning district where it's located, and the self-storage, I think it's called EZ Storage, which is permitted in the zoning district in which it's located, which is GB or General Business, it's one of the more intensive zoning districts. So the study area is mostly residential, recreation, transportation, service, and lastly, commercial. So there are just places throughout the DEIS where I tried to reframe, based on my experience with land use in your zoning, what I believed, how these areas should be characterized and are actually viewed.
And I'll just, just interject here, that this is ultimately gonna be the kind of thing the planning board will have to decide, so it's important to kind of flag some of these things in this document, so that when we get to ultimately coming up with the actual final environmental impact statement, and then our finding statement, that those things are accurately reflected in from our point of view.
If I can just add one more point, some, some of the comments that are made in here involve analysis and building a logic towards something, so you will see comments that will go on for a couple paragraphs, and I realize that's a lot for the planning board to read. But if you, if you read through and follow the progression, especially in the first section, land use, I think you'll, you'll, you'll grasp the logic of, the zoning of your own community, and, and why, also why, in my opinion, as a planner, this use really doesn't belong here. So, and then you will see some, some repeats with little changes as you go from land use to zoning and through the various topics. I think that, that's enough of a taste of that, unless there was another point.
Yeah, I mean, I had flagged a number of things, so maybe one thing you might wanna talk about a little bit more is page 11 of 25. There's really a lot of discussion about land uses in the study area, but then gets a little bit more specific about, given the site context.
Yes.
Other uses that are allowed in the RB district that perhaps might be considered compatible with those surrounding areas, especially the residential neighborhoods, so that's, why don't you highlight that a little bit?
Okay. So there are kind of two comments, there's D8, and, let's see.
Yeah, like you were saying, they kind of flow into each other.
Yeah, they sort of do. So comment D8 on page 11 lets you know that there's a substantial, detailed study area from single-family neighborhoods to multifamily development, and it goes again through some of the non-residential uses, which include, again, medical office and congregant care, healthcare services. That section's kind of focused substantially on zoning, and it doesn't really examine land use and the compatibility or incompatibility of potential nearby land uses. So commercial uses comprise a very small portion of the study area, they don't necessarily complement other nearby commercial uses.
This is new phone, I apologize, I have no idea how to work this issue.
Give it to me, I'll show you.
Don't worry. I totally apologize.
No worries, no worries. Anyway, the assertion that the proposed self-storage use would complement any of the nearby uses is not really well-supported, in my opinion, in my observation. And in the context, there would be a limit to the need for self-storage facilities, giving existing storage facilities within a very quick drive from the project site, there's about three to four options within three and a half miles of the site, two of these, 9D EZ Storage and Prime Storage on Route 52, are, are located in the GB, General Business zoning districts, where they're, where they belong. GB is among one of the three most intensive non-residential zoning districts. Extra space storage is located on Merritt Boulevard over in the Village of Fishkill. And then the bottom of that page, I talk about different things that I think would fit better, a restaurant or some other place serving food or beverages is a land use concept that should be examined. From a land use perspective, a restaurant or, or food place would be useful complementary land use, given the nearby places of employment, you know, the Congregate Care Center, and also Medical Office and Congregate Care Center, those folks need and find a little place to eat. It would be a midpoint stop for some of the walkers and bikers coming from into the Newburgh Beacon Bridge and on the Trail of Two Cities. There are, I, I don't know if any of you have observed this, but I've been through on a number of days when people really do walk across that bridge, or maybe it's somebody from the town of Fishkill side going out onto the bridge just to take a look at the Hudson and come back home, there's all, all sorts of iterations of walks that you could take if you lived in that neighborhood area. And it would be nice to be able to stop and get a cup of tea, a cup of coffee, a little snack, or where to stop and meet a friend for a quick lunch or something. It would be conveniently located near extensive medium-density, medium-density neighborhood areas, R15 in Fishkill and RD 7.5 in Beacon, to the northwest, north, northeast, and south of the proposed action. So it's literally surrounded by all of these neighborhood areas. And they would all be pretty much in walking distance of this place, you figure, if you look at that one-quarter-mile area, if somebody's willing to walk a quarter mile, there could be like a little eatery there, or a place of work. And, and those kinds of uses would be appropriate near residential, other community-oriented uses that would be consistent would be lodging for visitors from the train station, or people arriving by car, or guests of local and nearby neighborhood households that don't have spare rooms, or if somebody's having a family gathering, they can't put everybody up in the house, there's a nearby hotel, or a bed and breakfast. So a small hotel with an eatery is another concept. So I think there are plenty of options there. And I do talk at different points in the EIS about a lost option, and it's just by way of example, that there was a home there, pretty big home, actually, and I don't know why it was removed, that's not for me to judge, but there is a clause in the zoning that allows a building that was constructed before 1960, and it can be converted to, to or multifamily use, but that, that option is now gone, because that building was removed. So there are plenty of options for use in that district, I think that's my conclusion, other than self-storage, which doesn't really belong there.
Something else I noticed on page 13, toward the bottom, this is under comment D13, but you're talking about, the proposed action due to the nature of the use requires architecture that maximizes leasable storage area, which is not necessarily.
Oh, yes.
Consistent with nearby architecture or the character of nearby uses, including residential neighborhoods, I thought that was an important point.
You want me to summarize it, or you?
Yeah, if you wanna, or expand on it a little bit.
Okay. Comment D13, at the bottom of page 13, I took some time to look at the RB zoning district and take a look at street views on Google Earth and using other mapping applications. And this had to do with DEIS subsection B3B, land use characteristics of other RB-zoned areas in the town. And it talked about three projects in the community that are inconformant with the RB zoning district, with commentary about screening. And so I kind of went up and down Route 52 just to see what I was looking at, and what I, what I would see would be, I would see these office buildings, they're non-residential uses permitted in the RB zoning districts in those areas, but you would see notable tree growth, but there would be openings near non-residential development and multifamily buildings. The buildings are visible, but the street trees kind of soften the view, and onsite landscaping, it allowed the built environment to be, to be viewed. Even though there were extensive parking areas, the presence of the trees kind of softened the views. In this context, I was trying to think, what would it be like to have that solid, tall hedge of evergreen trees? It's a solid hedge, meaning they're planted close to each other, so there really are no gaps between them. And how that would look, and I, in my opinion, having seen a lot of land development, I felt that it would not be attractive, and that if you can soften the view of a non-residential facility from nearby uses, you could do that with plantings without completely presenting a barrier. And I also feel that in a residential area or mixed-use area, putting up a barrier doesn't seem very consistent with community character. And in contrast, the proposed use, because of the nature of the architecture, it's tall, it's pretty imposing, it's intended to maximize leasable area, so that makes good business sense. If you're gonna build something, you wanna maximize your leasable area to have a decent return on investment. But the problem is, it's not very consistent with the architecture of the area, which most homes aren't just built straight-up, two-stories, boxy, you, you see a little bit more shape and character to those things. And I guess my feeling about the architecture of the proposed self-storage building is that it looks kind of plain and stark and institutional, which is not at all like some of the older-style homes in the clubhouse for the nearby golf course. And I guess how I came about that was, I started looking. And I guess how I came about that was, I started looking around at different kinds of architecture in the area, and I actually, when I thought to myself, "That looks institutional," I thought, "Well, maybe I'm overreacting." But then I went on Google Earth and went along the road near the correctional facility and looked at some of the architecture there. And it did kind of remind me of this kind of stark, straight, kind of austere-looking And I think that that's why the proposed wall of evergreens is proposed, is to just kind of block the view. And that just doesn't seem, it's not characteristic of how vegetation is in the rest of the site, where the golf course has a wooded area, then they have a few trees, and you can see their building. Same thing with the neighborhood areas. There'll be a few trees, maybe somebody will have a green hedge along part of their property, but you still see the homes and see the buildings. So that was one of the character inconsistencies and aesthetic. I'm trying to think if there's any other, let's see. Okay, there is one more point, if it's okay.
I knew there must be.
And then I'll curtail things. Top of page 16, D19, the main point here is that one of the comments that came out of the 2009 comprehensive plan is that the street is our most important public space. And I would urge the board, you know, take a look at that paragraph, and I know you wouldn't ordinarily sit down and read the comprehensive plan or the comprehensive plan update, but that's why I came up with specific points that you can Word search for. But there is a lot in your new comprehensive plan, especially about connecting people and places and community and all that. And this type of use, land use-wise and interactivity with the community seems, it just doesn't seem to fit there. It's a very low-interaction, low-activity kind of place. I think I've covered quite a few things, unless any board members have any comments or questions about, about any of the comments that I made.
Yeah, this would be a good time to ask questions and/or make specific comments about the DEIS of your own that you're thinking about. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't mind starting. Having read through this, as well as the comments that we received from the public, I'm very sensitive to the point that you made on the comprehensive plan here at the end, and I'm very sensitive to this whole notion of land use. I absolutely, totally agree with you on your perspective of land use, although I do find myself in a conundrum, because one of the main discussions on land use is alternatives. And you cannot simply look at the alternatives just from an alternative perspective, you have to consider the rest of the issues associated with this entire space, which is significantly impacted by traffic. So that's one. Two, your notion of limited business, I've read it differently. I've read limited business as, maybe that's because the business is so limited and is focused on such a small aspect of what the public requires. And maybe that's why there's this overwhelming negative opinion in terms of what the benefit of this particular development would be to the community. And if you recall, one of my focal points along over the last year has been, what benefit is this particular development to the community at large? And I don't know what our, I mean, we've done a lot of work on traffic, we haven't done any work on capacity analysis for storage space in the community. So I don't, you know, I don't know what the potential utilization would be in an additional 300-plus units of storage. And then, the overall traffic situation is horrible, in that it's horrible today, no matter what, closing it will be worse. And to me, whether it's an issue of the traffic on the main route, Route 9D, or potentially on additional smaller roads that have been discussed here, whoever does the driving to go to this facility for their use is going to be impacted by the traffic. And in my view, that is going to overall have a potential impact on the business case for that particular unit, for that particular development, and then, as a result of traffic issues, it doesn't get utilized, then what? So just some preliminary thoughts in terms of both your comments, as well as the comments that we received from the public, as well as what you've had written here. By the way, thank you, it was very important.
Thanks for your thoughts.
Why don't we just go around the table, and just, if you have any comments or questions, just chime in.
I've been upset with the traffic pad.
I had provided very specific comments at the last meeting that were captured on the transcript, and then I think Felix made some points immediately after I had made mine, and I think really kind of captured how I, my feelings on the project. So I'm not going to reiterate them here, they're in the transcript.
Going through Liz's document?
I have.
Ringing any other bells in particular?
I think her memo here paints a picture that I can agree with, without spending more time. She had very much detail on that, and it's much appreciated, and I think it helps us. She paints a picture that I support and I agree with.
I think Liz really captured most of the things that we've been talking about and thinking about. That one that we just spoke about with the architecture and the community character, it's one of the things I've always felt with this, it doesn't seem like it fits there. We're going to have this giant box, and, you know, I mean, if you're going north past 84, sure, they're commercial properties and things like that, but once you go south after you've passed 84, it's all houses. And if you put this big box there, it just doesn't seem to fit with that character. And I like the way you've broken down the uses. That was, I know you started with that, that was one of the first things you talked to us about, and that's been very useful to us, because it wasn't something that I was really thinking about, when just trying to look at all the uses and what their purposes are, right? But I think you've really kind of touched on most of the things that I've been thinking about, so I'm curious to hear what they come back with. I did have a question about the process, and we talk about when the draft FEIS is done on their part, and what would make it so it would be inadequate for us? And that might be for you and Dominic and John. When we say if we want to accept it, or we think it's adequate, what would make it adequate or inadequate as far as what we should be looking for?
Could I start off, and then I'll turn it over to the crew to totally contradict what I say? But my opinion is, this is not like accepting the DEIS, or not accepting it as complete. What we're asking the applicant to do is to put together a draft, it's called a draft final environmental impact statement. What it really is, is responding to the public comments that have been received. It's the planning board's responsibility, then, for taking that document and reworking it into our own document.
Right.
Because, as Liz is pointing out, there are a lot of statements in the EIS that we don't either necessarily agree with, or may not be complete or accurately representing the comprehensive plan, or whatever it might be. So, once the applicant prepares and submits the responses to the public and agency comments, it will be our document to then do with, it will be our responsibility as the lead agency to take it and make it our document.
Yes, I agree. It's, you know, the FEIS, you know, as I was mentioning earlier, you know, becomes the board's document. It's the board's response to the public comments. It's not, even though the initial draft is prepared by the applicant, you know, it's done to the satisfaction of the board. So there's that. I would also, in addressing Felix's comments, would want to point out that there's really two kind of broad lines of inquiry that the board has in connection with this application. And Liz's memo, you know, touches on many of them, obviously, and is very comprehensive, but it's also helpful to kind of think of them as two separate things. And on the one side, you have the environmental impacts, environmental impacts that are associated with the project. They could be visual impacts, they could be traffic impacts, they can be all the other areas of inquiry that the board has that's broken out in the environmental impact statement. And the obligation there is to make sure that the applicant is proposing a project that's not only identifying those impacts, but minimizing them to the maximum extent practical. That's a process that this is going through. But that's one area, or one line of inquiry, rather. The other line of inquiry is the special permit. And the fact that this board, you know, has an application before it for a special permit, that this board will have to make affirmative findings, that either the application does or does not meet, in your opinion, the criteria for issuing or not issuing a special permit. And so that's, at the end of the day, once the record is complete, you'll have the opportunity to make a decision as to whether or not, based on the totality of information that's been presented before you, you feel that the application fits into the neighborhood or does not. It's a bit broader than that. I mean, we have a lot of items on the agenda, but, and I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, because this is a determination that is rightly made at the end of the process. But I'm sure that the applicant is listening, as to, you know, the fact that there are concerns from board members, and it's appropriate for you to address your concerns at this point, because it provides the applicant with the ability to, you know, continue to work on the FEIS, to try to bolster and make the best application that they can make, so that the board will be in a position to have the best information when you make your decision.
Liz, anything you want to add?
What he said, what you said.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Can I answer your question?
Can't say it better.
Actually, no.
No. Then rephrase it, please.
Okay, so that, in your memo, 11 says that the draft FEIS is not accepted or determined to be inadequate or incomplete. What is, what would the board, and I think this is good for all of us, is how would we determine if it is adequate or complete, so we can get past that step?
I would like an answer to that question.
Yeah, so I'm sorry for not addressing specifically that. You know, the board has a lot of discretion in this case. You know, that's what I've been saying, is that when it comes to an FEIS, you know, this will become the board's document, even though it's prepared by the applicant. And so, for instance, and I'm not suggesting that the applicant's going to do this, but if the applicant says, you know, "Here's all the comments regarding traffic, including, you know, the difficulty or the scenarios that we have, given, you know, the limited access to this site, given it's an overpass over Interstate 84, proximity there, too," and if their response, and they list all those comments, right, that were made by many, including board members, and they list all those comments, and they just put, "Comment noted, and don't say anything further about that."
And that happens.
You would reject that. You would say, "That's, you know, that would not be a sufficient response, in our opinion." Sharpen your pencil, go back, figure it out, because this is, and this is where, you know, the secret process specifically does not provide a time period for an FEIS to be completed when it's being completed by an applicant, in my opinion, because they're supposed to work at it until they get it right, if they can.
They have to engage with the question. They can't just say, "Comment noted."
Right. It's different than the DEIS, where the DEIS, you know, is you're measuring what they're proposing against the scope, you know? And they kind of get to their public hearing, like if they've at least addressed everything that was identified in the scope, you might not agree with it, chances are, you probably don't agree with it, but if they at least do that, they can get to their public hearing. That's how it's designed.
But that's why, in my opinion, it ultimately will be up to our board to take the document that is prepared and submitted by the applicant, to then do what we want with, and to make it our own. That may mean that we send it to CPL, to rewrite it, incorporating a lot of this stuff, which may or may not actually get into the final EIS. And that's the way we accept it, by making it our own. So it is up to us to do that, ultimately. It's not necessarily up to the applicant to keep going back and forth and back and forth. It's up to us to decide on what is a realistic and an appropriate FEIS for our purposes. Because then, the next step will be our statement of findings, which is really the key to documenting whatever decision we come up with. I think the finding statement has to be supported by the final environmental impact statement, but the finding statement itself is really the key to making the decision, more so than the final EIS. Mike? Is that getting better?
Yeah, it's much better.
Robbie, how about you? Did the document trigger any thoughts, or any questions from you?
Other than what people have already shared, I mean, more than the document, I read through all the public comments that I've received, and the main issue seems to be that it's the traffic, traffic, and how will the traffic be routed into the site, especially with the big box trucks coming in and out? So that is the major issue, in my point of view. And that issue has arisen because of the, because the site is being used for it, as a storage, for storage. If they change it to one of the alternative uses, then that traffic issue might be, impact might be less, because you won't have obstrucks coming in and out. That is my opinion.
EJ, any thoughts? So I had a few observations, so again, I'll reiterate what others have said, that I thought CPL's, Liz's job of putting the substantive comments together was very good, and I think it provides a very good basis for the planning board's decision-making process. And it's a process, so it's not an end result in itself. But as we've gone through, and as Liz has elaborated on some of it, it's particularly focusing on the use issues regarding the proposed self-storage facility, as well as inconsistency with goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, inconsistency with the stated purpose and legislative intent of the RB zoning district, inconsistency with surrounding land use patterns. surrounding land use patterns, and impacts of the proposal on public health, safety, and general welfare of residents. Now, the way I just phrased it actually has a lot to do with the way Section 15019B words the criteria that we will have to come up with. And that's going to be a key part of this whole decision. But some of the examples that I, that sort of flagged my attention, picking up on what Robbie was saying, the proposed routing of southbound traffic approaching to access the proposed facility through residential neighborhoods on Verplank Avenue, Duchess Terrace, and Rock Hill Road, as well as the potential for unauthorized U-turns by vehicles approaching or exiting the facility, impacting some neighborhoods such as Van Ness Road and Shia Party Place, has the potential to cause significant negative impacts on the safety and character of those residential neighborhoods. And then, another one that really caught my attention was this whole discussion about limited businesses as stated in the DEIS. When you look at it in the context of structure and hierarchy of the town zoning code, that made me think a lot about, you know, are there other permitted uses listed in the RB district that are potentially compatible with surrounding residential neighborhoods? And I think there probably are. So, and then that's elaborated in Liz's document. So, so I think we're good. So, I'll turn to the applicant team and just ask if there are any questions for you at this point. Okay. So, so again, tonight's actions really are just sort of informal actions, but requesting the applicants to address and respond to the agency and public comments, and also the planning board's discussion and concerns. Put together a draft final environmental impact statement for the board's consideration and then taking it to make it into an actual final EIS. And then this, this question about extending the time for filing the FEIS, we've talked about that. I think Dominic is here, opinion that as long as the applicant and the planning board are in agreement, as it sounds we are, that more time beyond the deadline of, what is it, October 27th will be needed to
Yes.
...complete the FEIS. We don't really need to take any
David Donald stood on the record. I think we're good.
So we don't need to take any further action on that.
No, sir.
Okay. Is the board good with that?
Yeah.
They don't have to actually extend it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just mention that the secret
The only thing they could do would be to sue for us not meeting the deadline by October 27th, which we would
Yeah, I'm not going to meet it.
Since they're preparing it, they would be like
I'll just mention that I know sometimes, Dominic, you don't fully agree with the way the secret regs are worded because of your experience and because of your experience and hands-on working with these things. But the secret regs actually do say that the lead agency, for appropriate purposes, can extend the deadline for filing the FEIS, which is actually our responsibility, the filing part of it. And if the planning, if the lead agency is going to extend the deadline, it should put in writing the reasons and the date of that extension. So, do we need to or not need to do that?
I think the minutes of today's meeting will probably suffice.
Okay. And since the applicant wasn't certain in terms of even the date that they'll be submitting the first cut at the document, a date certain is not really something we can come up with.
Correct.
Okay. All right. We all set?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is Homeland Towers Communication Tower, 73 US Route 9, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on September 25, 2024, and a draft resolution of preliminary site development plan approval and to consider its adoption. Welcome, Mr. Kenny. Would you like to just give us a very brief update on the most recent submission?
Sure, absolutely. So I believe our most recent submission really had three questions. The first one, I'll tackle this, regarding whether or not we could plant landscaping at the front of the property, or whether or not it'd be better to have, as we've suggested, a tree fund that the town can use to provide landscaping at off-site, whether having public commenters come and request funding for planting on their trees, for planting trees on their property, or for having trees planted on any town property or property that the town controls. I have up the survey, we took another look at the survey, in addition to the property owner not wanting to have the trees at the front of his property, we also looked at, he really has limited space at the front of the property. Most of this area, that's that island, is actually outside of his property, it's within the right-of-way or within Route 9's property. So we just don't have the space to provide the trees. So again, based on that, we do submit that a tree fund would be a better way to mitigate any of the visual impacts. The other thing was a request for the colors. So I do have tonight with me, I have the physical color swatches, if I can approach and provide.
Okay. Thank you.
So, again, as the board was reviewing, we had some proposed, we'll call them the sky colors, which are the light blue or kind of a grayish-blue tint. And then we have some earth-tone colors that range from kind of the greenish-browns to more of the dark browns. Again, this would be a choice of the board for which color. We're happy to provide what other color the board would prefer. But again, we also provided in the letter that we submitted the three different elevations, where we've been reviewing views in the visual analysis report, and there's a breakpoint, and we changed the breakpoint based on the different views. So, let's see, right here, if we have one. So right here, this is one of the views where we have it at a 66-foot elevation. And so we have views 17, 16, 17, and 18. This is 18. View 16 was the one that was from Carol Lane. So this one, so for view 16, this is at the 66-foot elevation, that's the change in the color. For the one that's at the Battery Monument, this is view 17, this is 10 feet higher, the breakpoint or the change in the color is at the 77-foot elevation. And then the one that's straight on looking down the driveway, this is also at a 66-foot elevation. So, we would recommend the 66-foot because it's two of the views, but whichever the board prefers, we're happy to have that be the separation point for the colors.
One quick question on that. Is there a way to like blend that transition area on the pole so that you're, instead of just going solidly from one color to the other, you're getting sort of a blend mix as you're changing the colors?
We can try that, it's just that would be hard to maintain. Again, with these colors, they usually patina over time and they fade. So, it may, like in the original painting, seem like it fades and goes in, but again, these colors being stark contrast of blue and brown, there's always going to be a part where you see the brown turning into more blue. Something we can discuss, but it's not something we've ever done before, we'd have to figure it out. But that's something we can talk with our, our experts and see if we can come up with something. This is not something we have to decide on tonight, but I can review it.
Is this just for the pole, or is it also for the antennas, or whatever you call it today?
The goal would be, the pole would be obviously just the brown color, but the top color that's going to be sky, we're also going to try to color the antennas to match that. So it'll be the mounts and the antennas, so those, the idea would be like everything that's in the sky that's visible will be that same color.
Excellent.
I know it's, some of the questions I have, it has nothing to do with your application, but are you under contract with anybody else to take any of the other portions coming below you at this point?
So, we don't have any, any written agreements with the other carriers yet, but we do have some interest from other carriers. That's obviously something that, you know, they're in the position to want to monetize and try to maximize. So they will absolutely, if the tower is approved and constructed, follow up with those other carriers and see if they can, you know, locate their equipment on this tower as well.
Thank you. Question.
Sure.
Is there any place in the area that has a multiple color that maybe we could look at, even though it may not be our colors?
We had originally in a prior submission, provided some examples. I don't know how close they are. One of them was a Cross River Tower, I believe in the town of Lewisboro. That one's fairly close. We had in a prior submission, I can resend it to Liz, but we had actually given three real-world examples of where we have done this exact type of design. I can resend that to the board so you can have the addresses and review. I think the closest one would be that one in Lewisboro, though. But yes, this is a design we've done before.
Okay.
It's like, I go, oh, so this up on the wall of my wife, she says, "That's beautiful, and we paint it." It's not the color she painted.
Yeah. As an attorney, I am beholden to whatever the board chooses for colors. My expertise on colors are whatever you want.
All right. We do have a memo from CPL. Would you guys like to quickly run through that?
Will we nice and quick?
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Really, there isn't a whole lot to say. It reiterates the general comment about what this is under the telecommunications law. And the only comments that I have, the site plan set is complete, but I do have very minor comments. And then I'm really deferring to you all about the design and reiterating that we just had a secret negative declaration. This was an unlisted action. And then I'm reiterating that the planning board discussed a two-tone color scheme, and that it should have a finish that's either painted or unpainted that minimizes visual impact. And on the site development plan, I had a comment about a need to revise notation regarding contribution to a town-managed landscaping fund. So I'm asking that somehow that be, somehow that be mentioned on the plan, I guess.
Well, so, I guess my thoughts on that are, there's going to be some things to work out about that fund.
Right. Yeah.
And that can be deferred until the final approval stage.
Okay.
So, I don't see how we can really put anything on the preliminary site plan set at this point.
Okay, that's, that's absolutely fine. And then at some point, whatever the chosen color scheme is, I would, I would think that should also be a specification that's a note on the plans.
Our goal is, is, once we have direction on which colors to choose and the breakpoint or the change in the color, for our final approval, for our final site plan approval and special permit approval, our plans will conform to whatever the direction is from that.
Okay, good. Sit.
So any questions from planning board members?
I have just one.
Okay.
Just talk about this $10,000 fund. I love the idea, but it seemed like, last time we talked about it, it seemed like there were a lot of issues. Should we just even consider scrapping that whole idea? Because, I mean, it's a nice offer, but it seems like we don't have a mechanism here to kind of deal with it. Or if not, should we at least discuss this with the town board? Because at the end of the day, we're not going to hold that money, it's going to be the town board that's going to have to figure out how to deal with it.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how to, I love the idea, I really appreciate what you guys want to do, but, you know, it seemed like there were a lot of issues with it, and
Mechanical, you know, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, no, but if it's going to cause too many issues, then maybe it's not worth it. But I think we should also at least have the discussion with the town board to ask them if they, they would like to take this on, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are going to have the money, not us.
I have been thinking about that a little bit more after the last meeting. And so I do recall, we took out references to that, or the tree buffer in the secret name deck. I think it's a discussion that can be ongoing between the preliminary and final plan approvals, so we don't have to worry about that tonight. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't bag the idea yet, so to speak.
Yeah, I'm not saying to bag it yet, but I think we need to put it on our radar as to what we're going to do with it, and then maybe how to approach it.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's a great offer, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to be the town board that's going to have to handle it.
The other thing that, that I was thinking about is that if there's a way that it can be done in a flexible way, so that it's not necessarily solely for the purpose of trees or landscaping in, in or near the vicinity of the tower, but it could be a more general kind of a tree fund for the town board to use in ways that would benefit town residents, and it might be for screening of the tower by nearby residents, or it might be for some other, you know, tree planting projects that the town has that would generally benefit the environment. And I think the town may be ready to go in that kind of a direction.
I'm not saying no, so, just, how do we start the conversation with the town board? I think that needs to be
Very carefully.
Yeah. Because, you know, if they don't want it, then
Yeah, that obviously
Then that ends the discussion.
That's a very good point.
I've never seen the town turn down money.
And the only
It's your work, Frank, you never know.
The only problem with accepting money and then not knowing how to deal with it has come up before. And so monies tend to sit in funds
Yes.
without a truly well-defined purpose.
Right.
So that's what we don't want.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Has, has this kind of measure been used in communities before where you've placed a tower? And do you have any sense of how that was dealt with there?
Sure. So, we've, we've offered this several times in other communities. However, most of those communities do already have some type of tree fund or, or tree landscaping fund. So they already have a process in place, so we're just adding money to a program. But in general, the way it works is, we'll contribute money, and then the application period will be opened by a town for, if they want to provide the money or funds to any of the public commenters. You give them a window to submit an application for some sort of apportionment of the funds so that they can plant trees on their properties. Then I've also seen towns take the funds and use it to plant trees on their own properties, whether they be in the town right-of-ways, where the town parks. As the chairman was mentioning earlier, I've also seen them plant trees in other places in the town, just in the general beautification of the town. So there's really a gambit of different ways that this can be used. We're in support of any of the ways that the board would prefer.
Yeah, I guess at the expense of the planning board and the town board having to sort of reinvent the wheel, if there's a community or a few communities that could be contacted
Sure.
to find out how they did this, so that we're not just fishing, like randomly calling communities in Duchess County or not like randomly calling communities in Duchess County or something. You know what I'm saying? Like, a shorter path to figure out what are the other mechanisms that communities have used
Right.
would be helpful to at least for the planning board to consider if that's what they want to do.
The town of Monroe comes on to mind. We just had a facility approved there in the town of Monroe last year. But they did already have a tree fund established. So again, we were providing something to something they already had a process for.
Oh, there is a tree law.
But yes, the town of Monroe would be a good example of something we've done recently. And again, you know, if you needed to consult with us on coming up with an application process or anything like that, we're happy to be involved in the process and offer, you know, any information and experience we have to benefit the board.
Any other communities?
I know the town of Clarkstown also does that as well.
Not Kisco?
Yeah. Usually when we offer money, it's usually accepted, so.
Those are some good examples to start with.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, shall we get to the resolution?
Yes.
All right, Dominic, would you like to run this through?
Sure. Thank you. And I had circulated a draft, you should have in front of you, draft number three. It's dated October 9th. This would be a resolution of preliminary site development plan approval for the Homeland Towers Communication Tower. It's located at 73 U.S. Route 9. This is, the application itself is for a site development plan and obviously also a special use permit, which is what the code requires. However, this resolution, which I prepared at your request at last month's meeting, I prepared it to only, at this point, consider granting the site development plan approval. And that way, the special use permit approval would happen at a point where the project comes back before the board makes a proposed final submission. And ideally, that would happen after they complete their process before the zoning board of appeals. My understanding is that they're currently before the zoning board of appeals and they may in fact be wrapping that up. But before that board makes a decision, as it stands right now, the project as proposed requires variance. And so as a result, if that variance, for whatever reason, is not granted, you know, the project would change and, but you would have had out there issued a special use permit for a project that no longer is conforming. So I did not include special use permit provisions for this, but it would be part of any conditional final approval resolution. In the interest of time, I won't go through all of the points that are made in here. I did, Mr. Kenny did point out one thing that I got wrong. I'm sure there's more than one, but knowing me, but what I did get wrong was on the second page, the second whereas, I indicated that the project was a type one action where Liz correctly identified it as an unlisted action earlier. So that should be changed.
That was Debbie that did that.
Yeah.
I'm giving Debbie credit for that. I didn't see it, I didn't see it.
Dave did.
Okay, all right.
So with that correction, I think that would address that. I tried to provide as much detail as possible for the board to consider. But as I mentioned, this would be granting preliminary site development plan approval. The conditions are not extensive, and that's on purpose because the conditions, once they receive conditional final approval, would be significantly different and also track the town code as far as all the various different requirements, including decommissioning and other typical site development plan approval elements. But because we're not at that stage yet, I preferred to keep it simple and required them to address any outstanding engineering comments. Listed the most recent memo prepared by CPL, which was dated October 2nd, as well as requiring them, before they come back for conditional final, to obtain the necessary variances. There's two, there's a left side yard setback, as well as a rear yard setback. And then all the other conditions are fairly standard. So there's a lot there, but that's really kind of it in sum and substance.
Any questions from board members?
No.
All right. How about from our other consultants, John or Liz?
Nope.
All right. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary site development plan approval for Homeland Towers Communications Tower at 73 Route 9, as reviewed and revised tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign it.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, Fred moved it and Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much for your time.
So, yeah, one other thing, yeah, go ahead, Dominic.
Yes, just to acknowledge on the record that the shot clock timeframes don't apply, given the fact that we're waiting now for the zoning board of appeals to finalize and also you to make a final submission.
We indefinitely extend the shot clock.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Indefinitely, right?
If you could do that for the FEIS for the prior project as well.
Lawyer jokes.
Yeah, you know, I made a laugh. I made a laugh. I got a chuckle.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Design, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. So I'm still serving on the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Visitation Data Committee, just for a while longer, it's almost done. But I will recuse myself again from tonight's discussion. So Anthony, would you like to take it away as chair for this matter?
Absolutely. Good evening.
Good evening.
As John had noted, this is for the Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Redesign, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. We, the board, will review the submission made by the applicant's representative on September 25th, 2024. I'll start by saying good evening and offering you a first opportunity to provide any updates since our previous meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, just for the record, Helen Moch, the law firm of Minster Moch for the applicant, HHFT. Amy Casella, the director of HHFT, is here tonight, and so is Erin Warner from AKRF. I'll try to limit the amount that Erin has to speak tonight because he doesn't have much of a voice. But, so we did receive a memo today from CPL. And we will be going through it. I guess for purposes of tonight, the one thing we would like to ask this board to do, which is consistent with the CPL memo, is to authorize circulation of notice of intent for lead agency. Other than that, we'll be responding to the CPL memo in due course. And I guess the other thing that we would ask is that we be authorized to speak with CPL and staff of the town to the extent that we have questions regarding clarification on what's set forth in the memo.
I believe we authorized, we may have authorized that at the last meeting.
You did, but I wasn't sure if we needed to ask again. So I just, in an abundance of caution.
Yeah, I don't believe that to be the case, but I think we've authorized it. I think that's okay from there. So I don't think we need to do that again. So just to clear that first item up, so. But yes, I agree that is, this board will be talking about the possibility of circulating for lead agency this evening. But I did, before we get into the CPL memo, I did want to mention that since the previous meeting, we did receive several emails from the public. I do want to note that the emails that we've received have been forwarded to all planning board members and the applicant's representatives. They are entered into the project file and are considered part of the record. But I do want to be clear that they're not part of a public hearing record at some point in the future. If this application continues to move forward, there will be a formal public hearing. And I would say that those members of the public who have sent emails are welcome. And I would even say encourage to make those comments again as part of a formal public hearing process. But I just want to make sure that you've received those as well.
We received, I believe, one email.
Okay.
If there's more than one, I don't think we received them.
I'm just going to just list what we've got. We did receive an email from Dave Morandi, President of Protect the Highlands, dated September 24th, 2024. It did include several attachments, one being a cover letter from Dave Morandi, President of Protect the Highlands, addressed to the Town of Fishkill Planning Board, dated September 25th. That letter had several attachments being, one being a letter from Putnam County Executive Kevin Byrne to Governor Kathy Hochul, dated September 10th, 2024. A letter from New York State Senator Rock Rolison to Governor Hochul, New York State Parks Commissioner Randy Simmons, and HHFT Director Amy Casella from September 5th. A statement from Phillips Town Supervisor John Van Tassel, dated September 5th. And then there was a joint letter from the Phillips Town Supervisor, the Cold Spring Mayor, Nelsonville Mayor, dated April 17th, 2024. So there were several attachments there. And we did receive an email from Aaron Seinwitzin dated October 9th. So that did come in yesterday. Those are the two that we've received since the previous meeting. At this point, though, I do want to ask Liz and John from CPL, if you can please give us a summary of your review memo.
You got anything?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. They acknowledged all the engineering comments, but didn't specifically address them that as their plans develop, they'll, will have another opportunity, obviously, to review. So I'm not going to repeat what we said at the last meeting.
Okay. And so my focus this time was to look at the full EAF comments from last time and see where we were on that. I went through all the different comments. And most of them were addressed. I know that we had noted the need for a traffic impact study, but it's our understanding that that is in the works. I don't, I mean, I don't know, but I'm guessing this isn't a huge traffic generator, except maybe on the weekends. But the project kind of has all these other options, like shuttles and such. So anyway, it didn't feel quite as urgent to have a traffic study before you take the step as with other projects. So anyway. So based on what we have, I think there's enough here. If the board wants to, go ahead. We do have some remaining plan comments, as John said. What we have now is a set that's really okay for circulation to agencies. Later, we will need them to put back in some of the more detailed stuff. But there was enough information there that agencies could understand the project surfaces, you know, the general design theme. So that being said, depending on how Dominic and the board feel tonight, the proposed action could be classified as a type one action in accordance with Seeker. And I just want to touch base on that real quickly. The proposed action involves rezoning. And also importantly, Duchess Manor is contiguous to the Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve. So if it wasn't for that, it would have been an unlisted action. But it is type one because of that. And that I do feel that you have enough information now to declare it as a type one action and to circulate a notice of the planning board's intent to be lead agency to other agencies.
Thank you. Dominic, I'll pose the question to you, whether you agree with Liz's assessment on whether this board could classify it as a type one action at tonight's meeting? And if you believe this board has sufficient information at this time, although a traffic study, a SWIP, I believe, you know, some other detailed documents would be needed. Actually, I believe we already have this one, but more detailed documents would be needed. Are we in a position where we should consider circulating for lead agency this evening? Yes, I recommend that you circulate for lead agency. I also concur that it's a type one action. And so the board could type it as a type one action. And I would also recommend that, as I mentioned, that you circulate for lead agency at this point. Understand that there's elements of this that relate to the trail itself that, you know, are before the Office of Parks and Historic Preservation in Albany. And so they would obviously be interested in an involved agency as far as this application is concerned. We understand that there's been comments and suggestions and concerns, frankly, that this application and how it relates to the overall review of the Fjord Trail are concerns that a number of people have. And as a result, you know, circulating for lead agency, I think, will clarify whether or not the State Office of Parks believes that it should be, you know, either an involved agency as part of this or whether or not it should be lead agency. To your point, you know, in connection with the fact that there is outstanding technical details, including the traffic study that's coming, I would note that it's not typically practiced to, you know, include all the information that's required for processing an application and making decisions on an application for lead agency purposes. You know, the EAF itself, once it's in good shape, is intended to suffice to provide information to all the other involved agencies to determine whether or not, you know, they feel they should be lead or not. That's the sole purpose of circulating for lead agency. You know, you also intend to get a secondary benefit in circulating for lead agency because you get agency comments on the specifics of the application where they may consent to you being lead agency, but then provide, you know, like the DEC often does and says, you can be lead agency, but here's a list of things that you should be made aware of. But I think at this point, Seeker encourages an early circulation for lead agency. And you've had the benefit of having your review and also the applicant, you know, addressing concerns in the EAF and the overall project, at least up until this point, to get it to a point where they could, where you could circulate for lead agency. And I think you're there.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Dominic, it seems to me that there's a prerequisite to declaring for lead agency. And that prerequisite is the recognition that this is a separate and distinct application from the trail. Has that distinction been made and agreed to by the interested parties, state, et cetera?
If I may, I think, you know, I think you flipped it around, to be quite honest, because what you have in front of you is an application. And you've, you know, the applicant has made the application directly to this board. The applicant has represented to this board that this is consistent with the direction that they've received from New York State. And so they've done what they have been told should be the approach. And as a result, by circulating for lead agency, a copy of this notice is going to go to the State Historic Preservation Office. And they're either going to, you know, agree and consent to this board being lead agency for this separate application, or they disagree, you know. And which case, you know, their option is to say, no, we should be lead agency in connection with this. So I don't think, what's that? Yeah.
My question was what happens at that point if they said they want to be lead agency?
Yeah, so then it gets into this very arcane provision of the Seeker law that deals with lead agency disputes. And so if the two agencies, let's say the Town of Fishkill Planning Board wants to be lead agency and... be lead agency, and let's just assume that for a moment, and then secondly, you know, the State Parks Office wants to also be lead agency for the project, then it goes to the Commissioner or the Department of Environmental Conservation. And he plays Solomon and decides who, who should be lead agency. And it involves an appeal process and, and a submission of briefs and, you know, and which agency has, you know, the better position to, to review the environmental impacts. I think, understanding from the applicant's representations as to what the State Office of Parks is saying is, is that because this is a site plan, it's located, you know, within the town of Fishkill, that as far as the site plan elements are concerned and how the Duchess Manor property is, is being utilized and proposed to be utilized, that in essence, the state is deferring to the town so that your concerns can be primary as it relates to the, not so much the overall trail, but as it relates to this particular site.
Just a follow-up then.
Yeah.
We, our lead agent, and a big part of it is going to be the traffic. And the traffic is all going to be driven by the trail. How do we balance that out?
That's a good question. Why don't we just circulate for lead agency first, you know?
So Dominic, there is a third scenario, right? Parks may consent to us being lead agency, they may not, they may not respond at all within the time.
Not responding is a consent.
I wanted to know if we could specifically make sure we asked them if they would, because here's my, my issue with this, and I was talking to Anthony about it, is that sure, I understand what you're saying. If they say nothing, they consent. But then we have the other situation where we have the public looking at us and saying, well, they didn't say anything, we think it's segmentation. And I would like it to be totally clear. I would like an answer from them, not a, like, we received nothing and now we assume that they're okay with it. Is there a way we can make sure that we asked them this question?
Yeah, I think they're gonna respond.
Okay, I, I, I just want to make sure they respond.
I don't think there's much fear of that. But I also, I want to touch on something else in connection with, you know, the allegation that this is segmentation, you know? And obviously, segmentation is one of those words that, you know, it's, it's, it's like, you know, it's, it's like, it's like a grenade in SEAKER practice, you know? It's like, okay, you know, we're claiming. But the purpose, the reason why segmentation, which obvi, also, I should note, you know, it's not, it's not impossible to segment projects. It's actually, it's permissible in certain circumstances. And one of those circumstances is when a project, you know, let me put it the other way, you know? The reason why segmentation can be bad and, and obviously discouraged is because an applicant is breaking up a project to avoid having to do an environmental impact statement, you know? But the Fjords Trail is going through an environmental impact statement already at the state level. And whether, whatever board, whatever decision this board makes as it relates to Duchess Manor is a decision that you'll make. You have the full ability, and this goes back to your question, Mr. Kanter, is to look at the environmental impacts related to how the Duchess Manor site is going to be used. So it's not as if, you know, you're breaking up a project into such small chunks that the overall doesn't get looked at, in my opinion. But, so I, I understand that there's a concern regarding segmentation, but it's not as if, you know, the applicant is going to the state and saying, we're gonna put in a trail here and please negdeck it. And by the way, don't look at Duchess Manor over here because we're dealing with the town on that, and they're gonna negdeck that over there in the town. But that's not what's occurring here. Like, they're providing full information to the town as it relates to Duchess Manor, and they're already in, in an environmental impact statement process. How that plays out at the state level is something that we don't have to worry about, quite frankly. I mean, because that's, you know, lead agency there is, is New York State.
Okay, but follow up on what you just said. Do we have to wait for the environmental impact study from the state?
No.
Cars?
No.
Because, okay, because we're gonna have a hundred and X amount of cars, because that's still bouncing around a little bit.
Yeah.
And if, and if it doesn't go through, what, we got a hundred and some odd cars on a small little house that's gonna be backed down, you know, without any catering or anything else going on. We're gonna make it a parking lot for what?
That'll...
Well, the, the parking would serve the existing trail users. There is deficient parking and safety concerns right now along 9D, and so the parking at Duchess Manor will solve for that, even without the trail.
Well, I agree. I was on 9D, I went down to Little Stony Point this morning, you know, this afternoon to walk the dogs, and it's beautiful. And there were very few people on Little Stony Point, and everybody was up on the mountain. Traffic was on a Thursday.
Traffic was heavy?
All up and down 9D.
Right.
So you guys go by it, and I, you know, it's, it's there. And I understand, would like to get it off 9D.
Correct. So that's part of the purpose of this project, this project before your board. And, Member Lopez, your concern, I cannot speak for New York State Parks, but, but what I will represent to this board is that I will convey your concern to counsel for New York State Parks and your request that they provide a written response.
Thank you. And Dominic, I think to your, to your point, us circulating our intent to be lead agency would be the formal step to induce a response from the state that would decide how this project proceeds forward with, with our board.
Correct.
And so sitting on it and doing nothing is not the appropriate step. The step is to circulate for lead agency.
Yeah.
Whether that's tonight or at a subsequent meeting, this board will vote, obviously, but I just want to verbally put that out there.
Okay, so the headline that's still up there is the Forge Trail. Is that?
Hudson Highland, Hudson Highland Fjord Trail, Inc. owns Duchess Manor.
That's it, yeah. Okay, I just, so, because there you're putting a trail in it, and...
Well, the name of the entity, the owner entity, is Hudson Highland Fjord Trail.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I mean, with that, I know you guys have started making comments. I was gonna kind of put it to the board. Kevin, I don't know if you have any other comments at this point?
No, I, I was just reading all of the great plans for all of us, and it seems to me that the prerequisite for the execution of all these great plans is...
Excuse me, Kevin, can you pull that microphone, please?
Sorry, I'm getting too relaxed.
That's okay.
It seems to me that the, the prerequisite for all these, execution of all these great plans is the Hudson Highland Fjord Trail. However, you've just made a really good point, because we had, we do have an issue. And to the extent that, that this particular project can resolve that issue, then it could stand alone, maybe not the same scope, but it could stand alone.
Jody, I don't know if you have any other comments at this point?
No, I have some for parking and RV and all that stuff, which you didn't include in.
We'll get into that. It's gonna be really fun and educational, yeah.
I know that. And just something I sort of want to throw out, because a lot of projects that we have, people go there for a time, but most people like, show up in the morning and come down when it's, you know, come down. So that's gonna be a lot of long-term parking. It's not gonna be a lot of in and out, except for certain hours.
We have traffic experts at AKRF. All they do is deal with all different traffic scenarios and traffic models. And so you will be presented with a detailed traffic impact study that, that takes into account how, you know, when and how the cars move.
Okay, well, one other thing, too, that you did present to the town that you were going to have a tent put up for certain events. Is that part of what you're presenting to us, or is that just the building itself?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not presenting a tent structure.
No.
No.
Okay, but I think you, I thought that was part of your presentation to the town board, when you...
Perhaps that was temporary as part of the event.
Did we show, oh, for like an annual gala event, did, was, is that what you're thinking of?
I have no idea.
An image?
I sort of remember it.
You sort of remember it? Well, no, we have said that there could be, there, there could be a special event, like a gala or something of that nature on a lawn.
Felix, did you have any other comments at this point? Robbie?
No, no further comment.
And Vijay?
No.
And I think the issue of parking, that's something that we'll kind of, we'll tackle in a, in a future meeting. I know that came up also in one of the emails I had seen as well.
Yes.
So I think that's something we'll tackle at a, at a future meeting. I know last month, we got a letter from Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. That would be something we would like to see formally responded to. I didn't quite see it in this go-around, but like to see how that is kind of captured, how those comments are captured in future plans. I don't think that's something that's, you know, needs to be addressed tonight, but that was something I had noticed as well.
Thank you.
And you had asked a question at the beginning. This board has authorized the applicant team to communicate with our consultants at the last meeting, so I don't think we need to do that again. So I think we're good there. So I think we're at the point now where there's, there's two motions for this board to consider, and I'll, I'll put them out there and see how this board feels about them. Is there a motion to classify the Duchess Manor restoration and site redesign at 263, Route 9D, and 14 Chorus Lane, site development plan and special use permit as a Type 1 action?
So, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And John has abstained, so that motion passes 6-0. Okay, I will read the other motion. Is there a motion for the Town and Fishkill Planning Board to circulate a notice of intent to act as lead agency for a Duchess Manor restoration and site redesign, 263, Route 9D, and 14 Chorus Lane, site development plan and special use permit?
So moved. Second, do we have to say who was sent in?
We don't have to.
I got it. We're done.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I know they are.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question here. Does it make sense for us to refer to the applicant as Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor, or the project as the application from Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor as opposed to Duchess Manor Restoration?
That's their name on their, all of their applications, Kevin?
Yeah, I think what I just...
I'm just, I'm talking about the, the, in the motion, right? This is a discussion of the motion.
So the, yeah, the motion was for this planning board to circulate a notice of intent to act as lead agency for the application that is listed in our agenda and on our application.
So it doesn't make any sense, then, to call this the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor Restoration?
I don't think we legally can, if that's who...
Because that's the applicant. The applicant, she mentioned that the applicant is Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor.
But the application name is Duchess Manor Restoration. The application name is Duchess Manor Restoration.
Counsel?
Maybe the entity applying is...
I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify the point here.
What's the point?
That, yeah.
What's the point? I'm sorry.
The point is you want the applicant to...
The point is that we had a discussion regarding the segmentation.
Yeah.
Okay, so by recognizing that the applicant is Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor, and we're talking about that applicant wanting to restore the Duchess Manor, does it make sense then to call this the Highland, Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor Restoration?
Not necessarily.
It's as identified in the application.
Say, what'd you say?
It says, it should be identified in lead agency circulation as the applicant has identified themselves in the application.
That's how it's, exactly, the way it's listed on the agenda is what it's listed as the project name.
I think we should list the project name, right? Not the, not the entity behind the project.
It's never the applicant's name. When they, when they propose a project name, that's what's used, not the applicant's name.
Okay, then, then, then I'm, I'm okay, but I just, I just think it's important to recognize here that the applicant is, includes Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor.
It says that in the application, Kevin, not the project name.
You're looking at the title of the plans.
Well, I'm also thinking about the ramifications of lead, of the discussion of lead agency with that particular name in the project. When, when, if I'm the state agency looking at this.
I think they'll know.
They'll know by looking at the application that's attached.
And the project description.
So I've, I've read, I've read the motion. I have a, it was moved, I need for a second here. So any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one abstention, so that motion carries 6-0. I believe that's all this board is going to take action on this evening, so we look forward to seeing you at a future meeting.
Thank you. Yes, we look forward to coming back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
When the mouse went across the screen, I thought it was a giant moron. Oh, boy. That's bad. Too scared. Oh, this is...
So I guess we have a couple of board members stepping out for a second.
Would you like to fill five, Mr. Kevin?
Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll return at 9:15.
Mutiny on the bounty.
People have voted with their feet.
Saucy. Absolutely saucy.
Well, we're missing a lot of people.
TV is back on.
So the next item is the Fishkill Medical Park Site Development Plan Special Use Permit and Subdivision, for to review the applications and supporting documentation that were accepted and referred at the September 12th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. So let's start off, welcome. And so we already had a kind of a report and a review, preliminary review at the last meeting, but is there anything you want to tell us?
I just wanted to mention, first of all, my name is Bill Polwell. I'm the engineer for the applicant, Kirkhoff Acquisitions. I was not at the last meeting. Jeff was here presenting. I know he gave a lengthy description and discussion, so I won't get into that. He couldn't be here tonight. And ultimately, we're here because the project was deferred to the planning board professionals for their review and comment, as well as the board's comments and questions. So with that, I'll step aside and wait for that.
Okay, so... Okay, so John and Liz, do you want to go through CPL's memo?
So we tried to do a comprehensive review, tried to focus on the EAF comments. My, my general conclusion that it's, it's not quite ready to circulate for lead agency. I reviewed per Chapter 150 zoning and also briefly per the tree preservation law. And just touch on a few little comments here. The site has the Clove Creek going through it, which is classified as CTS, which is trout spawning stream. So it's a nice little stream going through there. And it's tributary to the Fishkill Creek and Hudson River. Has Army Corps wetland, which basically the Army Corps federal wetlands coincide with the streams and I guess the edge of the streams. And it's also in the aquifer overlay zone. At different points in the application, it indicated the potential approval for water sewer connections or pursuing water and sewer connections. So I did make a few comments about that because it's using central wastewater, public wastewater systems is somewhat protective. It's actually very protective of aquifer areas rather than building a large scale subsurface disposal system. So I'm encouraging that all the way through. I noticed that there was an extensive cultural resource investigation. It was done quite a few years ago, kind of brought back memories of actually doing things on the typewriter. But it looks pretty comprehensive, but the one thing that was missing, I didn't see any kind of a letter from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. And I think that it, it's really quite comprehensive. It would just be a matter of submitting it via the Cultural Resource Information System to SHPO so that they can take a look at it, ask questions if they need to, or provide a sign off. But I didn't, I looked through and I didn't see a sign off, and ultimately, the Planning Board would need that. Let's see. And then, you know, I took a look at our comprehensive plan update from 2023. And one of the goals is to connect people in places. And I just kind of looked at the context of this thing. And so I do have a couple of comments about, there are some sidewalks from the parking areas just to the buildings, but it's not that far down Snook Road from Route 9. And shopping opportunities, restaurants, et cetera. And it is a business use. And so I'm recommending that the sidewalks from the parking areas, other than just going to the doors, go down the driveway. And then to have sidewalks along the north side of Snook Road to connect down to Route 9. Because there are sidewalks along Route 9, pretty extensively. So that was one of the recommendations. And it is, you know, again, it's a place of business with employees. If they want to go get a bite to eat, maybe that's an option for them to walk down the street. CPU all talks about, also talks about conserving critical lands. And I can see that there's a lot of the site that is to remain undeveloped, but its fate isn't really clear. So it would be helpful to have more detail on that and see if there are any measures for permanent protection of any of those parts. And there's one, a third lot, it doesn't show any proposed development, but it doesn't necessarily say that it's going to be protected. So I'm guessing it's a future lot for something. Let's see. So a lot of the review that I did related to the full environmental assessment form also made me take a look at the plan set to see what we needed there to try to show proposed development, existing conditions, and potential impacts. But some, some aspects of the plan set were a little bit troubling. Just one example is, um, there's a set with two sheets where one sheet shows one building and shows grading up to the line that it matches the other one. And then the next sheet is the other building with the rest of the grading. And so my concern there is, it's fine to show the sections, but we really need to see the whole picture. And, you know, partly because of the code and also because of SEACER review. We do have traffic comments. And the lighting looks pretty good, but I know there's some, looks like there's some glare and, and off-site light down near the end of the driveway. Let's see. I don't, it's not ready at this point to do any circulation to identify whether it's unlisted or not and to circulate. And it would be good to have a tree preservation plan. I think they have most of what they need to put that together. And the idea here is to show the existing conditions with all of the wooded areas and trees. And also to show a proposed condition which would show, these are the disturbed areas. This is what remains. These are the things that can be preserved. These are areas that will be landscaped. So kind of follow through that whole progression with the wooded areas. So it is a nice buffer along Interstate 84. And, you know, for the rest of the neighborhood. There's reference in the fully EAF narrative about the use of native varieties, but that it's not necessarily expressed clearly on the plans, what the intention is with that. And there's a rock outcrop area noted in the EAF. And I do have a series of comments where I started looking at mapping and aspects of the plan set show what looks like a rocky knoll on the site. And then other mapping shows that nothing is there. So I'm trying to get an answer on that because sometimes the different mapping platforms have different time periods, just to figure out what exactly is the terrain that we're starting with for existing conditions. And, um, and then, uh, we do have some traffic comments. The traffic engineer, you know, had a number of comments. He didn't have any really big comments, but it would be, there were aspects of the traffic impact study that he needed to have revised so that he could follow through to the conclusions that the traffic impact study was trying to make. So some work is needed there. And otherwise, there's engineering.
Yeah, the, the engineering comments are relatively straightforward. I think our biggest concerns are the, the water and sewer connections. Bill, have you approached the, the village on, on the sewer connection yet?
We have not.
How about KMO for water?
I have, I have spoke with them.
Okay.
When that 12-inch line was installed, the intention at the time was to provide a connection for the Oasis project.
Okay.
Because they gave the town an easement for that water line. So that's in place now for a connection.
Okay. I, I guess, I mean, I, I'll, I'll have a follow-up with, with KMO. I, my only concern was, are you getting enough chlorine contact time if you're not pulling from the tank?
Yes, we are. That particular line has a 12-inch water main for a certain distance for the.
For the contact time?
I'm, I'm sorry, a 20-inch, I believe it is, for contact. And then it drops to 12 once it reaches.
All right, and then you're coming off the 12.
We're coming off the 12.
All right, that's good. We did, we only had a few comments on the SWIP, but they will need to make some revisions to that. And other than that, it's a lot of just giving us extra detail on, on the stormwater features. Yeah, I mean, from an engineering standpoint, they're, they're in relatively good shape.
All right, any questions from board members?
What's the name of the project?
I saw Snook, I saw Snook Road Medical Building.
Oh, yeah, there's two names. Yeah.
We'll have to pick one of those, I guess.
It's either Fishkill Medical Park or Snook Road Medical Park.
It's Fishkill Medical Park.
Yeah, I thought that was the.
I think the pre-.
Where Snook Road came from.
Yeah, it came from the pre-.
I was surprised to see the Snook Road.
From CPL's point of view, you might want to look at the, I think, in the, under Fishkill Medical Park, you're citing 387 to 485 US Route 9 and a parcel number that doesn't match up with the parcel numbers. And so you might want to fix that in the future. I don't know where that came from, but. So we did get a letter from Dutchess County Planning on the GML referral, and they had, it's a local concern with comments, but they had quite a few comments. And so I won't reiterate all of them, but they had a lot of good points about circulation and parking, lighting, protection of the wetland, and then signage details at a future point. The county also did mention the need for additional sidewalks within the development and also external on the frontage of Snook Road. And also, they also mentioned public transit in the area serves the Route 9 corridor. So it's likely that there could be some additional people using the transit who might be able to either walk or bike to the medical office park. So that should be a consideration. And then in terms of the bicycle use, there would be a good idea to probably add some bike racks or sheltered bike facilities. And also, I guess their question is whether there might be some, for, for staff and workers in the buildings, whether there might be some appropriate bicycle interior facilities. Lighting, you've mentioned that, Liz, but I think the county is being a little more specific about best practices for certain levels of foot candles in the parking areas. And, um, also getting into like the color temperatures. So they have some suggestions for that.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah, definitely.
What exactly is an uplight? What does that mean?
What, I'm sorry, the.
No, in the.
Uplight, oh, uplight means.
Yeah.
Uplight, lighting spilling upwards into the sky.
They want down, downlighting, they want top on it.
The town's code requires downlighting and full shielding, dark sky compliant, so that light doesn't spill off of the site or into the sky.
So we, what, how is light going up?
So if you don't, so if you, I, I'll use this as an example because we were just talking about it this evening, looking for the northern lights. The town's parking lot does not have shielding as per the town code. Although I'm sure the town can do that because it's the town. And it, it probably came about before the town adopted code provisions for shielding. However, if you look at those lights, it spills not only outward, but upward into the sky. And that's what we're trying to prevent.
John, you could tell the town about their lights.
I think they'll probably hear it on the record. So those were, those were the main county comments.
And if I can just insert, um, one of the comments talks about the Greenway Compact. And, um, the town of Fishkill has zoning that specifically deals with design guidelines and other matters related to the Greenway Compact. And it's on page 10. So I didn't get into detail looking at that. I wanted to do a broad brush, some details with a broad brush, but pointing you in the direction of, here's some other things I'm going to look at in case you want to go ahead and look at them first.
All right. Dominic, do you have anything you want to ask about?
I defer to CPL's comprehensive review on this project.
Okay. So I know CPL's memo indicated that there are numerous items left to be addressed, and it's probably premature to take any actions under SEACER at this point until we get that in better shape. So, I mean, it, it's probable that this is an unlisted action under SEACER, but I mean, I don't think there's even a need to classify it at this juncture where it's not going to go anywhere.
I don't remember if I even did that.
Yeah, I think you did. I think that was mentioned in the memo.
I did? Okay. I forget.
So, um.
But I, I think better to have more information before the board takes action to say it's unlisted and circulated.
So there's quite a long list to go through and.
Understood.
So the submission date for the November meeting is October 30th, I think, Debbie? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So you can be in touch with Debbie and let her know what it looks like for the upcoming meeting or meetings thereafter.
Okay. I do have two requests.
Okay.
Number one, since the memos are extensive, we would like permission to speak with the professionals for any clarification with any of the comments. So we'd like to have the ability to contact them as we're responding to them.
Okay. All right, so we can do that now if the board agrees. We could do a motion to authorize direct communication between the applicant's representatives and CPL. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is it just the CPL or it's going to be the legal?
Well, so far, it's really not getting into legal issues right now. So if that becomes necessary, we can probably do that at the next meeting where that might be relevant. Any further discussion or other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that carries seven to zero. So that's one.
And number two, one of the comments was to locate, the entire property is 48-plus acres. And we're proposing the development on, will end up being two lots in the westerlymost portion of the lot towards Route 9. And we're disturbing approximately 6.7 acres. And then just to the east of the development area are wetlands, town wetlands that are restricted, which carry further across to the east quite a ways. So those are areas that we're not going to be disturbing. It's not going to be part of the site plan as far as any development. And one of the comments was to locate all the trees for the entire site. And what I'm asking is if we can locate the trees as per code, I believe it's 140, the tree code. We've, we've actually located all the trees in accordance with the code for 12.7 acres. So we covered the entire eastern portion as well as an area beyond where we're, we're disturbing into the wetland line. So what I'm asking the board is, is there a way to waive or consider waiving locating the rest of the. or consider waiving locating the rest of the trees on the property since we're not going to be, it's quite a bit of work, it's going to take quite a bit of time. And ultimately, what we'll be able to show is an overall wooded area without actually going and locating all the specific trees. So uh, that's one request I'd like to make tonight because that's something that's part of what we're going to need to respond to.
Any thoughts, Liz?
Well, um, I guess I saw that there, there is, there are a lot of individual trees identified and then I, I agree, you do have wooded areas.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with identifying wooded areas as long as it's in, it's in a part of the site that's not going to be disturbed.
Correct. That's, that's correct.
And I know one of my questions was, can we see the whole site? Just, and not for all of, not for all of the plans, but just as one.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, we can show the, we had a complete survey done for the property. So we can show the entire site. We can show all the environmental features, everything that exists out there. However, right now, a lot of the areas are shown as a wooded area. And we didn't locate specific trees over a certain diameter. And that's all I'm asking for is, you know, the areas outside of the disturbance area, can we not, is, you know, requesting that we not be required to locate those trees specifically because they're in a group of trees in an area that we're not even going to be near, nor are we going to be disturbing.
Right. I think two parts of that. I think one is, um, as long as there are adequate notes on the plans and the tree preservation plan in particular, that'll probably be a separate sheet in itself, I think. Indicating, you know, just what you've been describing. And that, you know, no, no trees will be removed in those areas outside of the disturbance areas. But secondly, for sort of an overall evaluation of the general wooded nature of parts of the site is to provide some kind of a description of that, you know, which would cover certainly the wetland areas and what the characteristics of the wooded areas within those are.
Understood.
So I think, given those two things, I think that would be fine.
I guess the other thing is not, I have a hard time answering this kind of a question when I'm not looking at the map. Because I look at a lot of plans.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't submit it, but I, I drew on here the area that we, that we located.
I'm just wondering if we could.
Which, and I can include this in the next submission.
If we could.
So again, this could be something that you might be able to communicate with.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
So this would be something we can.
Yeah, oh absolutely, yeah.
Respond.
And we can have stuff on screen and.
Okay.
And then, you know, put something together and then obviously, when it's submitted, the planning board with our input from our consultants will, you know, weigh in further on whether what you've submitted looks sufficient and appropriate or whether there's something else we want to see.
Okay.
But I think if, if you're communicating with CPL on it, it should be fine.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you and thanks for the comments and uh, we'll go back and do our homework.
Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Cool. No, I don't, I don't get that right.
All right, the next item is Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on September 25, 2024. Welcome.
Good evening.
So I, I know you've been visiting the Zoning Board of Appeals on a number of occasions recently. So I imagine that's probably a large part of why you're here tonight to talk to the planning board. So if you want to just quickly give us a kind of an update on the submission and what your goals are from here.
Sure. So we've appeared before the zoning board. We got out of here on June 13th with preliminary approval and we've made four appearances before the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've modified the plans, so some of the variances have changed. We added a variance for the number of stories. Because if we need an FAR variance for the basement, then intellectual honesty dictates we have to count the basement as a story. We're only allowed two and a half, so we're asking for three. We eliminated the variance for the sign on the building. We brought that into compliance. We had modified our plans while at the zoning board to have two monument signs. We've got rid of that, we're just going to have one, so we don't need a variance for that. And one of the requests from the ZBA was to provide additional parking for the gas station and convenience store. And they had had two spaces. We considered that a pre-existing legal non-conformity, so we didn't request a variance for it. But the ZBA was concerned, they wanted additional parking, and so we provided that additional parking. It was our expectation that that would kind of satisfy their request. At the last meeting, they said, well, thank you for doing that, but we want to hear that the planning board is conceptually okay with the revised plans. So that is the main reason that we're back here before you. And I'll turn it over to Zach to kind of walk through the change and then show that to you. And so we're just really tonight, just looking for conceptual approval so we can go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, get our variances, and then come back here. So we appreciate the CPL memo, but the submission really wasn't an attempt to satisfy any of the conditions of our preliminary approval, but just to show you the plan revisions. The second item, just to bring to your attention, is we had represented that the lease terminated for the gas station in 2027. And technically, under the current lease, that is when it terminates. But it was brought to our attention that they do have the option to extend the lease by two five-year periods, which would bring it up to 2037. They have not exercised those options yet despite their stating to the otherwise. And in order for them to exercise it, they have to be, uh, they can't be in default of their lease. And for a variety of reasons, it's our position that they are in default and they wouldn't be able to do that unless they were, came into compliance with the lease. But again, that's a third-party dispute, but just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, and we've been brought, it's been brought to our attention, certain other things that are going on as well, but we don't need to talk about that tonight.
Precisely. So with that, unless you have any other questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Zach just to kind of walk through the modifications that we made.
Go ahead. Okay, thanks.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. For the record, Zach Cam from Dynamic Engineering. The changes to the plans that Corey mentioned are pretty minor and they resolve mainly around the gas station. So previously, there were two parking spaces directly adjacent to the gas station. Those are still remaining. Let me zoom in a little bit more. There you go. So these two spaces here were the pre-existing. Previously, there were seven spaces here and those nine were the total that were provided in the vicinity of the car wash and the gas station. We have since added a new row of five spaces here adjacent to the car wash. The five spaces meet the required five spaces that the car wash would require per zoning. These seven spaces, in addition to these two, as well as two additional new parallel spaces here, totals seven for the gas station and convenience store, where 10 are required for zoning. Those were really the requirements requested directly from the zoning board.
I have a question.
Go ahead, friend.
Regarding the car wash. You're going to have, how many employees there? Two?
Um, the facility hasn't been fully fleshed out yet, but typically one to two.
Well, I assume you have two. And if people are going to come out of the car wash and there's a spot for them to dry their cars, do the vacuum? Where they, where, most car washes I know have vacuums outside. Where's that location?
That hasn't been incorporated into this design. It is a manual, a machine-operated facility that you would circle in a counterclockwise position.
Well, I understand that, but still people get out of their car and even those ones that dry your car. And they pull up and they, you know, normally have a machine outside to dry, you know, vacuum. And then a lot of people go out with rags and dry off their cars. And I don't see where that's going to be. And I don't see how you're going to have employees. It doesn't sound like you have enough parking for that car wash.
So zoning, zoning requires.
You had a lot more.
Understood. So zoning requires five spaces for the car wash and we have five spaces directly adjacent. Car washes don't typically require a heavy parking count since they're typically, people drive in, get the car washed and drive out.
So you're. So you're confirming that there will be no vacuum apparatus at, at those parking spaces, at least as you know right now?
At this time, that's not part of the application.
But that's what we're approving.
We need to know that.
If there's going to be vacuums?
Sure.
Well, yeah.
Well.
You know, you're asking for that approval.
No, just to be clear, we're going to, we obviously have to come back to you guys for our final site plan approval. And now that you've raised that issue, that's something that we will discuss with our, our client and see, you know, what the plan is. I, I don't think, this is the second car wash that I've worked on with them and the other one did not have any outdoor vacuums or any area for people to dry their cars. That's not the operation that they're working on here. But again, tonight, we, we're really just specifically talking about the additional parking spaces that we added. Not that, that's not a valid question. And when we're back here for final approval, all things that we'd like to discuss. But I think tonight, it's really just what the ZBA asked us to come back for, is, is the focus of our appearance.
And that's a, because you're asking for this site plan to be approved.
Well, no, no, they already, so.
Well, we proved it.
So there is a preliminary site plan that we did approve, that this now has some minor modifications in it, which we're not here to actually approve tonight. But to provide feedback so that they can proceed with the zoning board application. So I think what the applicant is saying is that if there are going to be further changes to the plans, which might include vacuums or might not, or anything else, that would have to come to the board when we're considering the final approval. But we are not considering approval of this modification to the site plan tonight. I mean, we couldn't approve it tonight. We don't have, the process doesn't call for that, for what we can and can't do.
The zoning board was just very concerned. They didn't want to approve, give us the variances based on a certain plan and then have us come back to you all for final approval and then have you guys be like, no, we hate this plan. That's not what we approved in preliminary. It's a totally different change. So before they acted, they just wanted to get your sign off on it.
Huh?
Did they want our?
They want your conceptual blessing that the, the addition of these parking spaces is acceptable to you.
So I'll, I'll just say from my own perspective, we don't grant what you call conceptual approval or what the ZBA may have called conceptual approval. What we can do, if the board so chooses, is to indicate basically by a consensus of the board or a discussion, which will be reflected in our minutes, that we are okay with the changes or not.
I, I used the wrong terms. I apologize. But that's really what I'm looking for.
That's confusing, some of the board members.
Yeah, the word approval is confusing.
I, I didn't mean, that's why I put conceptual, but it's really just a blessing of the, the changes.
What do you, what do you think?
Exactly. What do you think?
What do you think?
What do you think? I have opinion.
And, and we may have mixed opinions, so, but I mean, that's, that'll be reflected in whatever we do tonight. The other thing that you didn't ask for our opinion on is the the modification in the sheet that deals with the, the size of the fuel truck that goes in there because that came up at the ZBA meeting. And so do you want to talk about that briefly? And I think the planning board probably should discuss and weigh in on that as well.
So our previously submitted plan included a 55-foot fuel tanker, which was a 9,200-gallon tanker. We have since updated the size of that tanker to a 60-foot 12,000-gallon tanker, which the gas station has indicated is what they use for their operations. And as you can see, the 12,000 tanker does safely maneuver the site. We did slightly widen the radius here to account for that. So the plan that is before you does show adequate maneuverability for that larger tanker.
Can you show how it would go around?
So the tanker would make a right turn off of 9D. It would come into the facility. It would fill up the tanks, the fuel tank underneath. It would then back up, come around, make a left, a left.
So it has to back up, huh?
It does.
Now, the smaller, the smaller truck, did it have to back up?
It was the exact same maneuverability. The only change is that we slighten, slightly enlarged the curve radius just so it can make the right turn. But the, the orientation and the movements are the same that you previously saw.
And was that okay with the gas station, with that turn?
We've submitted the plans. They haven't commented since we submitted.
Now, on this plan set here, um, is that closed off 9D, the access there?
Which access?
Right here. Like, the truck can't come out onto 9D.
Right here, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, that is, that is curved off. The only exit from the gas station that we're proposing is a right turnout.
Okay.
And the fuel tanker will not be able to make that turn.
Will not make it, right.
Yeah, the, the actual service tanks are right here.
You mentioned that the turn is, would normally be a right turn coming eastbound, I call it, on 9D. Is that typically where the fuel trucks come?
It is because the, the truck is so large, that would be coming off the nearest interstate, which would be coming from that direction on 9D. And then similarly, it would be making the left out of Pappas to go southbound on 9D.
So it wouldn't even be wanting to turn right if there were a way to turn right onto 9D?
Not typically, right.
Because that's not where it would be going.
Right, okay.
And are, are the two parking spaces too, that you added to the right, I mean, are they going to block? I mean, are they going to be in a way?
They are not. They were specifically located to be outside of the, the path of the fuel tanker.
Oh.
Is there, is there clearance on if the tanker backs up and the parking?
Your microphone, your microphone.
If the tanker backs up and those parking spaces are full, uh, the tanker backs up to, to then take the left turn? Is there enough clearance for the tanker?
There is, you can.
Safety, I mean.
There is. You can see the striping of those two spaces and the path of the tanker is outside of the striped parking areas.
And so when we get to the CPL memo, but I, I'll ask the question now because I talked with Liz earlier today about both the addition of the parking spaces around the gas station convenience store as well as the revised plan for the truck movement. But do you want to comment at all about the workability of, you know, both the parking that they've added as well as the truck circulation?
I, I looked at this, um, the, the parking spaces that they added comply with code. And, and like you described, the truck movements are virtually the same as what they had previously. It's just a slightly larger and heavier truck.
And I think there was also a little bit of concern about cars maneuvering in there, but they have plenty of travel lane here, I think.
So what, just, so what you have done is added five additional parking spaces in the plan?
Uh, we've added seven. So there are five new ones adjacent to the car wash.
I saw those.
As well as two parallel spaces adjacent to the gas station. So these two are new as well.
Where would those be now? I mean, because. Where would those be now? I mean, because it's not close to the-
So we were extending the curb line. So right now, the curb line goes straight. We were actually going into the grass area adjacent that's currently there to give the two extra parking spaces.
So the two parking spaces are not the ones close to the building?
So there are these two existing and then there are two new parallel spaces right here.
And then the handicap is way up there to go into that building?
This is, this is the ADA space, correct?
And that's a, so the person who's in a wheelchair is going to come out of that and go that distance?
To where?
It's not accessible to anything.
Because the building's also grocery, isn't it?
Well, the building is also an existing condition.
Well, of course, whatever, you know, milk, bread.
Convenience.
Convenience. Correct.
Yeah, the building itself does not currently have ADA-accessible parking and it's an existing non-conforming.
Oh, that's an interesting question. Could, could or would any of the new parking spaces designated for the convenience store be handicap accessible?
So the building itself is an existing non-conforming, so there's no requirement to bring it up to ADA standard. We could look into striping one of these two adjacent spaces that would be closer to the building. If you would like us to do that, that's something I'm sure we can manage. But the building itself and the grades, I'm not positive would still be quote-unquote ADA compliant, but the space could be closer.
Is that something the board would like to see?
Well, I'm confused. You're telling me there's steps to go into the building?
There's no steps.
And the door's not wide enough for-
I'm not sure how wide-
ADA compliance?
I'm not sure how wide the door is. I was more referring to the actual parking that's provided.
Yeah.
There's no handicap spaces out there today.
Well, I'm going to leave that to the refreshers, but I thought you wanted your ADA's close to the entrance as possible.
That's, that's what we're talking about. That may be one of the two that are directly adjacent to the convenience store could be marked as handicap spaces.
The thing is, there's no requirement for them to be ADA. It's compliant today as an existing condition.
I didn't think of that because they're both at an angle and I don't know if that's absolutely necessary. Like, I don't, I don't know that in that location, you could have them nose in 90 degrees to the-
Looks like not with the truck coming out of there.
Right.
That, that's why I kind of figured the handicap space was way up there, the ADA space. And I don't, I mean, does the convenience store have a bathroom that's ADA accessible?
I'm not sure.
No, not really. It's fine now.
I know that the site drops off pretty significantly. As you go towards this side, the gas station's kind of set up on a little mound.
Right.
So I'm not sure if someone will be able to safely maneuver around it today.
Oh, you mean the, it's an outdoors door? The bathroom?
No, no.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm going too far. Okay, sorry. I don't know how old this building is. Some of them would just have a door that opens to the outside world, so.
So it almost sounds like by designating a parking space as handicap accessible, that it would be implying that the rest of the site and the store are or should be handicap accessible. And that might be misleading.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to mark a space as accessible to then not have an ADA-accessible route from that space.
Okay.
So, something to think about a little more, but I don't think the board would want to direct you to show one as handicapped accessible if that creates other issues.
Plus, I guess, well, I guess it's true of all gas stations. Do you really want somebody in a wheelchair or other type of vehicle maneuvering in an area where people are coming and going from gas tanks? But I guess that's just true of any gas station. That could happen.
Well, I'll, I'll stick my neck out and make a comment about this current pre-existing gas station. It's a terrible location for a gas station. Now, I don't know anything about their business plan or how well they do or anything like that and it's really not up to us to factor that in, but this gas station being there just causes a lot of problems with the, the rest of the plan. And I'm going to ask some questions about the lease agreements later on, but I don't want to interrupt our current train of thought on that right now. Actually, but talking about the lease area, I'm wondering if you, so I know that the materials we received and put together by Mr. Salamon do show outlines of the lease area. So the board might want to take a quick look at that, but it's basically a rectangular area of 125 feet by 60 feet. And it actually clearly shows that the existing building is not entirely within the lease area.
So if I could just interject one thing?
Yeah.
We put this 125 by 60 box on there. There was no legal meets and bounds description, as you saw in the lease agreements.
Right.
Right? It's just approximately 125 by 60 and so, you know, we did our best to try to fit the entire operation in the box, but we're unsuccessful in doing that.
And not to mention, which is more relevant, although I don't know how relevant it is to the planning board's decision, but all but two of the parking spaces that are now shown on the plan would be outside of the lease area as well.
Correct. And I mean, if you look at the, the lease agreement, when it talks about parking spaces, it just says spaces that are adjacent to the premises. Then the only spaces that would have been adjacent to the premises are the two that are adjoining the building there.
So this presents some interesting questions in my mind, but so since I'm mentioning the lease agreement and the lack of documentation regarding the extensions of the lease, and there, we have no documentation, and I'm sure you don't either, indicating that the gas station operator, the lessee, has exercised their final two options to the year 2037.
No, and in fact, the, I spoke with the owners today and they wanted me to clarify the record and be sure that everyone is aware that these options have not been exercised. They have not received anything. And in point of fact, the, the option that they're, the extension that they're operating under now, they never even filed the required return receipt request at all, were exercising our option. We've just, the owners have collected rent and so they'll, they'll let them stay through 2027, but even this one wasn't actually properly exercised.
Yeah, so that, I also was going to ask about or indicate that the, there is no documentation that even the lease extensions through 2027 had any formal written kind of documentation or at least you weren't able to provide that to us.
I was not able to locate it.
So that's, you know, how relevant that is. I don't know, Dominic, if you have any words of wisdom on it, but it's certainly created questions in my own mind.
Yeah, it's a very interesting scenario, you know, and it's not a typical scenario, if I may, because you have, in this case, an applicant that is proceeding with an application before the board for the redevelopment of an overall, you know, integral site that includes an existing gas station. Their, their plans show that gas station and also, you know, show how they intend to, you know, improve overall conditions on the site according to the applicant and that's what the board is reviewing. And yet, you know, we now have written correspondence from the attorneys representing the tenant, who is not a party to the application and just to be clear on that point, does not need to be a part of the application because the landowner has provided their consent to the application. That's not to diminish or, or to pass judgment on any of the concerns that the, that the gas station in, as tenant, you know, is raising for various considerations and, and I think that there's a number of different categories here. You know, there's technical concerns. They, obviously, they've also submitted comments from La Bella that they are asking the town planning board and the zoning board of appeals to take into consideration and you can do that at an appropriate point. But, you know, there's also these contractual issues, you know, as, and we understand what's being conveyed to us tonight and there's also the possibility and certainly the, the position taken by the attorneys for Gasland is, is that they disagree. And, you know, it, it gets into an interesting scenario, is what I was saying at the top of that is, is that, and, and the difficulty is, is that the planning boards, this really doesn't have any jurisdiction over adjudicating or deciding like what rights like various different parties have, you know, that, as opposed to like a landlord and tenant, whether or not the lease is extended. It's not extended, whether or not the, you know, you know, the proposed improvements are somehow impacting or negatively affecting, you know, their lease, which is essentially a contract. And so there's all of that component to it and, and to be quite honest, you know, the, one of the options that the tenant has, which they've now exercised, is to bring inaction in connection with their lease with the, in Supreme Court in New York State, which is an odd name for a court in New York State.
For the lowest court.
It's the lowest court in New York State.
It just made that feel better, right?
Yes.
And, and then of course, the highest court is the Court of Appeals, you know, and there's an intermediate court, which has an even more ridiculous name, but in any event. You know, so they've started that, that process. And that's, I, I think, a one way for it to proceed. They can also see if they can agree on, on where things stand between the applicant and, and Gasland, but that's really kind of, kind of up to them. I think the board's obligation is to look at this on a very technical level basis and to see whether or not the application, you know, meets the code requirements for site development plan approval. You've already granted preliminary site development plan approval and they're now pursuing the variances that they need. They'll either come back from the zoning board with the variances or they come back with something different. And then the board can consider, you know, the technical aspects of the project at that time. And as I mentioned, you know, also take into, into account the technical comments that have been provided by La Bella on behalf of Gasland. But what I would caution you about is, is I don't think that the board would really be in a position to pass judgment on whether or not the lease is extended or not, or, you know, to what date. I think that's going to work itself out through litigation, to be quite honest.
I would agree with everything that Dominic just said. I would also add that it would be helpful if as the Gasland representatives represented to the zoning board of appeals that there was an approved site plan that they got approved in the 90s. And when we looked into it, there is no approved site plan that we can turn to that vests any sort of rights and circulation that they assert that they have. I'm not sure that the, the gas pumps in this location would ever obtain site plan approval. I mean, it's in the setback right next to a major road.
When you originally approached us, we were given that date around the 27th.
Mm-hmm.
Did you also indicate what you were going to do when that lease was up with that building?
We did not indicate what we were going to do with the building.
You didn't indicate anything?
No.
So it wasn't to remove the tanks or anything?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. And this is something, I guess, for later on, but something I think that has to be on the radar here. If it comes back that they do have this till 37, one of the conditions you guys had was that when the lease expired in 27, that you would close off all the accesses, which made sense. But the question I have, and again, this is not something that has to be answered today, is that that all depends on DOT really, right?
Correct.
So we were hoping DOT would hold off till 2027. If it happens that it's going to 2037, I don't know if DOT will hold off till 2037 in wanting to close that off. So then I think the question would be, what happens then? Should we then look to DOT to give us an answer because that would affect, you know, the approval we gave?
So what we proposed was closing the right out driveway upon the termination of the lease. DOT has somewhat agreed that that makes the most sense. They want to close as well.
Right.
However, closing it off while the gas station operations are remaining wouldn't be feasible due to the location of the fuel tanks. If someone was filling up, there would be no room to maneuver out of the site. So that can't be closed while the gas station is operational.
So then, when you're saying that, if, if their lease is to 2037-
It would have to stay open until-
It would have to stay open. Okay.
Why would they extend it to 2037 in this condition? It's beyond me.
Well-
Isn't, isn't just looking at-
They're being pushed out the door.
And as Dominic was mentioning, there is now a court filing that where probably that's going to decide a lot of the things we're talking about, one way or the other. Or sometimes courts don't go one way or the other.
But I, I don't know if I'm understanding it correctly, but isn't it ultimately this several chunks of land that we're looking at, we're looking at under code with the understanding that that's there? And maybe I'm wrong here, but theoretically, any knowledge we may or may not have about whether it's going to continue or discontinue maybe isn't pertinent because I don't think that there's any control over that ultimately. I mean, I, I know that's kind of a blanket look, but you know, for all we know, we won't know the answer to this.
In my own mind, when I made my personal decision about voting for preliminary approval, I, I have to say, I was basing that in part on the assumption that the gas station would be gone in several years.
That's what I thought too.
I think that's probably what we all thought and heard. And, you know, so.
I see.
And to be clear, that is certainly what the applicant and everyone on this team thought based on the information that was provided to us. It was not until July when someone from Gasland, I mean, it's unclear to me why they had notice signs posted on their property and for a year this application was going on and they didn't chime in earlier, but it was at the ZBA when they first appeared.
So we're almost at 2025. The assumption was that by the time you get fully through the approval process and hear finally from DOT and the Health Department and all that, we'd be getting pretty close to 2027 before construction would even be beginning. So it was just sort of factored in as part of the process for moving this year development along. Hearing that the gas station operator now contends, without documentation, by the way,
Yep.
that the, they believe the lease will go through 2037, gives me second thoughts about the whole thing. And especially gives me second thoughts about the presence of that gas station continuing there for that long a time where, and again, you know, whether I get into trouble for saying things like this or not, I don't really care. But, you know, that gas station is just an accident waiting to happen in my mind. So, that's my feeling.
Well, it's been there for like 20-something years, so it must be working somehow.
Yeah, I mean, operating under the existing conditions.
Yeah, it must be working somehow.
When something actually happens, then we'll see.
Like I said, it's been there for 20-something years.
Anyway, that's not really relevant, as you said, Felix. Anyway, that's not really relevant, as you said, Felix, tonight's...
Yeah, not for tonight.
Matters, and it, it's not going to be in action, it's going to be, basically, that's why I don't think we need to go through CPL's full memo, because really, the salient points I wanted to get at, the layout of the parking additions at the gas station area, and the truck circulation and movements, we've talked about, and CPL has basically weighed in that the layouts look workable, and I think that's the message we can give to the zoning board of appeals, if the planning board, you know, agrees that that's where we are. So, I'll look to the planning board members to see if there's a consensus on that, or not.
On the new parking lot spaces?
The new parking lot spaces was the primary question that the zoning board, I guess, asked the applicant to ask us about, and I'm suggesting that since the circulation truck movement pattern is now revised based on the new information about the size of the truck, that we also weigh in on that.
About how much land were you taking? How much land were you taking on the two additional parking lots? You said you were taking away some of the...
How much of the grass area?
The grass area, excuse me, grass area.
The spaces are 22 by 9, so about 42 feet by 18 feet.
And that leaves about how much more, because that's...
You're referring to these two extra spaces right here?
Yeah, the two parking spaces.
How close is that going to get to? Is that showing it on this map? Is it on this schematic?
Yeah, let me show you on the side.
There?
Yeah, they need to be longer than they can do. They also don't need to be as wide, because it's going to be next to you.
Right. But they're all wide enough to go. I need those spaces, right?
Yeah, so there's still about at least another 10 feet or so of grass at the most narrow point, and a more substantial amount of grass in this area. So the two parking spaces are only nine feet wide, so with the additional curb just under 10 feet wide was added.
Appreciate you still having that entrance coming in.
This entrance here has not been modified at all, it's the same right turn-in that it was before.
Excuse me?
This entrance here...
Yes.
Is the same as it was before.
Okay, no, I understand that we just got a narrow spot between the two.
Yes.
It still looks like it's adequately separated from that entrance driveway.
I guess my question is, with the gas truck turning movements, if they're backing out once they deliver their gas, the tire was like right up on those seven spaces. Like, if you're going to add the five near the car, closer to the car wash, and the two off to the side there, then just get rid of the seven, so this gas truck doesn't potentially back up into a pickup truck. I've seen people drive massive pickup trucks that jut outside the back of a parking spot. So now you're, if you're going to put the five closer to the car wash and the two off to the side, get rid of those seven and avoid the potential disaster of a gas truck backing into anything.
You can't, because they want the extra one.
I mean, this, this, this whole thing is 10 pounds of crap in a five-pound bag.
Anthony, that was, that was my concern.
Yeah, I mean, that's my recommendation, get rid of the seven. You've put the five near the car wash, and you've added the two to the side, get rid of the seven, and now we don't have any gas truck movement disasters.
The drive aisle is 30 feet wide, so it is a little bit wider than, you know, a standard drive aisle, but the truck does certainly...
I don't feel comfortable approving something that has a truck-moving line right at the back of a parking spot. You could say, you know, how much space there is, but, you know, I've seen people navigate trucks going over curbs.
You mean pickup trucks or trucked trucks?
Any.
Real trucks.
He's talking about the fuel tanker.
Right.
Fuel truck.
Yeah, pickup truck.
I mean, if this gas station could be here for God knows how long, let's get rid of that potential hazard. I don't know, it's as simple as that for me. We spent a lot of time talking about this.
Can we go back to the truck movement?
Yeah. I thought there was enough space, I thought. Yeah, this is...
Okay, so that's also showing the parking spaces?
Yeah, it safely maneuvers without impacting any of the parking spaces.
So, how much is the, between the truck and the parking spaces at the top?
How much space is between them?
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure.
How much is that width?
It's right on, the line for the truck is right at the bottom of the line for the parking spots. It's right there. If you took a ruler and went from one curb to the other curb...
Yeah, that space, how much is that?
You can almost, yeah. You just follow the line where the handicap strip line is.
I mean, it's a matter of, you know, a foot or so, it's pretty close. I can't give you the exact number, though. But it does not impact the striping or the required space.
Those seven are required spaces?
So these seven spaces were on the plan previously, the five that we added were the five to the north...
Yeah, they were up...
As well as the two down here. So we added seven spaces, but these seven have always been on the plan.
Yeah.
And in fact, the 55-foot tanker that was on the plan previously looked almost identical in proximity to the spaces. It's a 50, it's a 60-foot truck compared to a 55.
And the turning radius at the top around the, is okay, too?
Yes. It safely maneuvers all the way out to Pappas around.
Yeah, because before that, yeah, yeah, okay.
It comes all the way around and will make a left out of Pappas at the light.
Those seven spaces serve what?
The seven?
Yeah, what do they serve?
I mean, they're centrally located in between the two uses.
Yeah, I always thought they were going to be for either use.
I mean, we allocated them just per, to discuss zoning, for the car wash and the, I'm sorry, the gas station and convenience store, because they require 10 per zoning. So those seven plus these two, and these two provides 11 adjacent to the gas station, which would be zoning compliant, and these five adjacent to the car wash make that zoning compliant.
Well, I guess I'll ask our engineer, Mr. Bodendorf, again, to reiterate, you know, if you've had a chance to look at this, and do you have any concerns about the questions being raised by board members?
I mean, yeah, it's, it's a tight turning radius, but the, the fact is, these types of things are designed like this all the time, and it isn't really much different than what they had before. We can ask our traffic guy to, to take a look at it, but I think he's going to give you the same opinion.
The major difference, I think, is the truck is an extra 10% figure, approximately.
Our other idea is, instead of removing the entire seven parking spaces, maybe just remove the first two, first two out of the seven, so, because the, those are the ones closest to the truck. So, so just reduce the seven to five.
Which?
The first, starting from the left.
From the left.
Starting from the left, remove the first two parking spaces.
You're saying these two spaces, the first?
Yeah, the, remove those two, because they are the ones closest to the truck, so they are the ones that can...
The trucks, the truck is pretty much the same distance from all, all the spaces.
No, but the truck is going to turn inside, right? So it's not going to touch, get close to the other spaces. The truck is turning right, and it's not...
It does, but it doesn't impact the spaces.
It's just not safe.
Correct.
It's just not safe.
To address Anthony's concerns, basically, when the truck is backing out, these first two spaces are the ones that, those are the ones that get close to the truck.
You may have to stay there all night until the cars leave. Not our problem. 60-foot truck.
Correct. The one thing I just want to do note, these seven spaces have not changed at all, they're the same ones that were always shown on the plan, the same width of the drive aisle.
Yeah.
Just want to make that clear.
So the preliminary plan that we approved showed that part being the same.
Yeah, right there, but we never considered the size of the truck at that time. So we had the five up, we put the there, and two others on the side, and it's zoning compliance, now, correct?
And those were explicitly requested by the zoning board.
So if we do something less, then they have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get something less.
We need our parking variance anyway, due to the self-storage facility. The zoning board explicitly asked us to add additional parking around the gas station and the car wash.
Potentious crime.
Dominic, do you have any legal concerns over this whole discussion? Should we, for instance, do what John suggested and possibly refer this to the CPL traffic engineer to take a look at it? Because we're getting kind of differing opinions as to the safety of that layout.
You know, I, I think that that would be one option, you know, another option would be that the zoning board has asked the applicant to reappear before this board, to get this board's, you know, viewpoints on this, and, you know, you, there certainly has been an open discussion regarding that tonight, and, you know, another simpler option would be to provide a copy of the minutes or the video to the zoning board of appeals, so they could see the full tenor of the discussion.
Yeah.
And, and let, and let's see that, how that goes.
So rather than this being a consensus or a conceptual approval, in quotes, because it's not an approval, we would simply refer the discussion here to the zoning board and let them figure it out?
I could direct them to the one I provided, the one that's on the video.
I fear that that's going to lead to...
That's not going to help.
Me being ping-ponged back and forth from the board, because, I mean, they said, the zoning board said, "We only want to vote on the final plan," and I tried to explain to them, "You're never going to vote on the final plan, because I have to come back here for final approval, and at that time, you could modify the plan as you see fit, as the approving body." And, you know, after 25 minutes of that discussion, to no avail, here I am before you, and I just fear, while I don't disagree that that's a decent idea, I just fear that I'm just going to be ping-ponged back and forth.
I believe that's true.
Yes.
I got my paddle.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe the other option would be to refer it to CPL's traffic engineer, as you suggested, and have a report perhaps back next month, and have it on the agenda, and perhaps, and if that might guide the board in coming to a more formal consensus as to how it wants to respond to the zoning board of appeals at that point.
Mr. Chair, isn't the, isn't the lots that were parking, that we're approving, is not even, has anything to do with the gas station, except for the two on the side? The five, the five up above is a brand-new?
Well, unfortunately, the gas station is there, and it turns out to be an integral part of, with all the other stuff that's being proposed around it, so you can't separate the two out, in my opinion.
I'm not, I'm just saying, but, but...
So it's not, so your question was...
We've already approved those seven at the top.
Correct.
So, conceptually, that's what we approved.
Preliminary, preliminary.
So we're adding five additional ones that we never considered before, all right? And then he's adding two more for zoning, that's on the right-hand side, where the grass used to be.
Right.
And I'd say, I'd say prove it, just go.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the seven spaces we're talking about have been pre-approved.
What?
The, the seven spaces that we're talking about in this discussion were approved by this board.
Oh, I understand, and not, well, the two are, the two are not.
It's just that Fred...
Correct, the two and the five were not, yes.
Fred, it's just that those seven that were approved in preliminary approval were assigned to the car wash, basically, as opposed to the gas station.
Yeah.
And that's the problem that the zoning board had with this. Now we're, we're discussing things that we really never discussed before.
Right.
And so I think I would feel more comfortable referring this to CPL's traffic engineer, transportation engineer, for, you know, an actual review and recommendation of exactly what we've been talking about tonight, because it no longer becomes a question of just adding seven spaces to the gas station so that a variance can be granted, it doesn't have to be granted for that anymore. It's the safety of the area, the circulation and layout of the area, does it work? Will it cause safety issues?
Debbie, can I ask you, what's the timing of the next planning board meeting? I know the ZBA meeting, I believe, is November 19th.
Yes, it's before.
This is...
Yeah, we're usually before.
Yeah, we're...
Yeah, it would be, it would be November 14th.
November 14th, thank you, Dominic.
Sometimes.
So...
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Chair?
Well, I think we will, well, I think it would be a good idea to get a motion to refer this to the CPL transportation engineer, and report back to the planning board on the issues.
And so you just want him to report back to the planning board, okay?
Yeah. So, timing-wise, if we get that in time for our November 14th meeting, and put that on the agenda here, again, and have a report from CPL's transportation engineer, that presumably would fit in with your next appearance with the zoning board.
Correct. I'm assuming I don't have to make an additional submission to be back on on the 14th, since we're waiting for the CPL?
Once they make that official motion.
Okay.
So would somebody like to make a motion to refer this question about, it's really a combined question about the whole layout of the revised parking area and the seven parking spaces that are now assigned to the gas station...
And the truck.
As well as, in conjunction with the truck movement, which is sheet number, what sheet number is that?
It's the left. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it when it's done.
23, sheet 23.
Sheet 23. So Fred moves it, and Felix seconded it.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I have one, one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Back to Fred's point, maybe it's not associated with the motion, but I think the new additional parking places, the five, preclude any future plans to put service stations associated with that car wash anywhere, right? Because there's no room. So, so the car wash will not have...
You mean the vacuums and stuff?
That's, I call those service, service areas.
Oh, you have no idea.
Right, there's no, I mean, there's just no room, because we took the, those five...
The five spaces, a, and again, you know, based on the other experience that I have with this client, I don't believe that was the intent anyway, but we'll confirm that.
All right. So that's just a point of information, right? So conceptually, we, we would...
Well, we're not agreeing to anything yet. We're agreeing to, on this motion, to vote yes or no to refer this to...
Yeah.
The CPL transportation engineer.
Do I have a question?
So, go ahead.
Can I, can I stand up to Shadi?
Sure.
Where the truck is turning, cars can be coming in out that way, too, right? What hap, is there enough clearance for that truck to get in if there's cars at that stop sign? Because what if you have two cars back, you know, at the stop sign, now you have the truck trying to come in off of Route 9D, that's, he's waiting, we get, it just, I don't understand.
You mean the, the truck trying to make the right turn-in?
Correct.
So the truck itself is 60 feet long?
That's, he's waiting, we get, it just, I don't understand.
You mean the truck trying to make the right turn in?
Correct.
So the truck itself is 60 feet long. Typically, the way those function is it would wait for the car to clear. There's almost no way to be able to facilitate a 60-foot tanker entering a site.
That's the point I'm making. And I would agree with Anthony a thousand percent. I think this is just a dangerous situation. We already know Route 9D is a disaster. And this is only going to add to it because if you get a situation where people are not courteous sometimes in New York and they see a truck and they don't think, "That truck needs a lot of room to clear and, you know, you're going to be taken out the curb because I see a curb there." And I just see it as a problem. I think the whole configuration needs to be reconfigured. That's me.
Again, yet another reason why the presence of that gas station in, I'll call it, the center of the proposed development is problematic. But legally, you know, do we have anything to say about that? Not really. But technically, from the circulation and access perspective, we certainly do have. And that's what we're going to refer this for comment and recommendation from CPL's transportation engineer. And then see where we go from there. So we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? All right, so that motion carries seven to zero.
Could I ask for authorization to speak with your consultants in the interim?
Sure, we don't already have that, or is?
We do.
I always just ask every meeting, if it's still good, then I'm good.
So as I always say, if it's going to be engineer to engineer, that's one thing. If it's involving attorneys, then both attorneys from both sides have to be in on the conversation.
I try to avoid the engineer discussions anyway, I just want to. I just want the ability to talk to Dominic.
They try to avoid the attorney discussions.
It's nothing personal.
It's understandable.
It's a different language.
The engineers and planners try to avoid the attorneys.
I, I, yep, I've noticed.
And what the architects do, nobody knows.
No.
Would you like to provide?
He just wants to sit there, he doesn't want trouble.
All right, so we'll hopefully get a report from CPL's transportation engineer and see you back at the November 14th meeting.
Great. As always, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. Have a great evening.
One more item.
There's one more item?
There is, oh, because while you weren't here, we added an additional agenda item.
It's not in the agenda.
That's why you should never be waiting.
I need time to put my toys away. Oh, no, technically, I'm done.
Technically, you are done.
Bonus agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So really, the only one I would like to stay is Dominic because he will be involved in our discussion. So we will excuse John and his, and thank you very much for your presence tonight.
Thank you for the very stimulating discussion you just all had. No, I'm serious.
It was stimulating in certain ways, yes. All right. So this final additional agenda item, which the planning board agreed to add, is regarding the zoning interpretation on ZBA application number ZB 24-004, Heritage Financial Credit Union, 1476 Route 9D. Just across half the slide from the one we've been talking about, for the sign variance. So I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. So the planning board received a zoning interpretation, as you all should be aware of, from Joel Petrus, building inspector, zoning administrator, on October 3rd, 2024, regarding the ZBA application that I just mentioned. The planning board had reviewed this ZBA application at our September meeting and the board authorized a recommendation letter to be sent to the ZBA, raising a number of issues and questions regarding the proposed sign, including not only its height, not only its height, but also its area setback and the nature and character of the sign with full color. Okay, good night. With full color LED digital reader board, as described in the ZBA application, as a possible prohibited sign under Town Code Section 15043D5. So Mr. Petrus's zoning interpretation actually does not include, you guys listening?
Yep.
Does not include any reference to the proposed sign's height, area, or setback from Route 9D. It only addresses the question in reference to the type of monument sign that is being requested, which is a digi, and this is in quotes, "The question in reference to the type of monument sign that is being requested, which is a digital static monument sign," end quotes. So that's not my wording, that's the wording in the interpretation. So I'm not sure where the word "static" even came from. The description of the ZBA application was a sign with full color LED digital reader board, as I'm repeating myself, but I think people need to hear that. The interpretation refers to the Town Code, again, Section 15043D5, under prohibited signs, which includes signs with flashing, blinking, intermittent, or moving lights, or any artificial light which is not maintained stationary and constant in intensity and color at all times when in use, except for signs displaying time and/or temperature. So in fact, that description in quotes from the code, to me, is a very accurate description of exactly what a digital LED display board does and what they are. So the interpretation then uses the Merriam-Webster definition of "static," in quotes, in part citing "characterized by a lack of movement, animation, or progression, and standing or fixed in one place, stationary." Well, yeah, the physical sign itself is stationary, it's fixed, attached to the ground. But the full color LED reader board or display board typically contains letters and images that by its very nature can be characterized by movement, animation, or progression, which would be inconsistent with Code Section 15043D5. This is in contrast with Mr. Petrus's determination that the legislative intent of Section 15043D5 prohibited signs has not been met. Therefore, this application does not require a variance. In fact, there was no legislative intent for LED digital signs because they didn't exist when the Town Code provision was written. So we also saw and attached to the letter going to the zoning board, the Dutchess County Planning Federation article, shedding light on digital signs, March, April, 2019, which further describes the nature of digital display reader boards or LED signs as displaying words and images that are changed by remote or automatic means, ranging from single color to full color, and from static graphics to a constantly changing video stream. Messages can change without animation, with animation, or include video. So that's directly from the Dutchess County Planning Federation article. So I suggest that the planning board consider challenging Mr. Petrus's zoning interpretation because it seems so blatantly incorrect and could set a precedent for other digital signs proliferating in an unregulated way throughout the town's landscape. So I had asked Dominic to review this interpretation and let the board know what your thoughts are. So Dominic, if you could.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cantor. I did review the materials that you had sent over. And it's hard for me to, to, you know, get in the mindset of someone else. And I'm, you know, but it's a kind way of saying, I don't understand, you know, the interpretation that came out from Mr. Petrus here in this particular case. I looked through the materials, I didn't see a specific request in writing from Timely Signs to Mr. Petrus where they were asking specifically for a zoning interpretation as it relates to the stationary aspect of the sign or not. I may be missing that, but.
So Debbie.
It was sent to the ZBA, it was sent directly to Joel, it was carbon copied, but it wasn't shared with the ZBA.
Yeah, so, but it goes to the point as to like why, you know, this particular interpretation was issued by the building inspector. And, you know, I would like to review that just to see, you know, whether or not he was responding to a specific question that was being asked of him in connection with others. And this is in the context, of course, of that, that there's a pending application before the zoning board of appeals. And so nonetheless, we have a building inspector that has made an interpretation, it's dated October 3rd, and it addresses specifically the prohibited sign section that you discussed, which the Town Code, quite clear, this is a direct quote, "Signs with flashing, blinking, intermittent, or moving lights, or any artificial light which is not maintained stationary and constant in intensity and color at all times when in use, except for signs displaying time and temperature." And that's prohibited. You know, as you mentioned, Mr. Petrus then looks at a definition of static. I don't know if that came from the applicant or if that was somehow related in connection with this somehow else. And reaches "static" and gets to "stationary" and then appears to make the leap that because the sign itself is not moving, it's not prohibited even though it's going to be digital. I think it's fair to say that two minds can disagree on that point. You know, and rightly so. I mean, it doesn't seem to be fairly supported in terms of that interpretation with all due fairness and discretion to Mr. Petrus.
So this is where I think the planning board has the opportunity to challenge the interpretation by filing an appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
And then that sort of puts the question right back to the zoning board of appeals, whether we want to also get into the question of whether, all right, so I didn't look at the whole zoning board video, but apparently, Debbie, you might be able to weigh in on this, but.
Sure can.
But did the applicant agree at the zoning board meeting to alter the height and/or size of that sign?
Yes, actually, they did.
Both of those?
Yes.
So that both would now comply with the code requirements?
Yep.
And did they, did they or would they submit that to the zoning board?
That's their next question right now. To be honest with you, I received an email earlier part of this week from the applicant to Joel and to myself, asking what the next steps are because they have now revised their plans in accordance with the ZBA wanted. And because they've received this interpretation from Joel, from Joel, that they don't need a variance, they wanted to know what those next steps are. That's for Joel to answer. I don't know what Joel has advised them, if anything, at this point in time.
So at this point, then, assuming that the plans have been revised to comply with the other code requirements, only real question remaining is the question of an LED electronic display board. Flashing those, and that's why I think it's really important that the board file an application to request an appeal from that interpretation by the zoning board of appeals.
Specifically, you're specifically asking that the zoning board overrule the interpretation by Mr. Petrus?
Yeah.
As being inconsistent with the plain reading of the code.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Yes, where are you from? Yes, go ahead.
We started with those two blinking lights on Route 9. All right? Which, that's exactly what these are, right? They're flashing.
Oh, you mean, you mean the billboards?
Yeah, billboards. Now who approved that?
Mr. Petrus.
Well, I'm saying, is, and is this a certain same interpretation as he allowed those to go in?
Let me just suggest that if the board does agree on filing this application to the ZBA to challenge that determination, I also plan to discuss with the town board the need to revise the current sign regulations because there are aspects about those billboard approvals by the building department that I also really questioned, but there was no written interpretation or determination. Simply a sign permit was issued to allow those billboards to be totally changed into these electronic display boards, huge ones. At the same time, there are other signs that are primarily by public or quasi-public agencies like the fire districts.
And the town, and the town recreation.
And the town itself, right, the town itself, which have electronic display boards.
As does the county have that with the stadium.
Right, which is, that was fairly recent also. So these are fairly new things that we're seeing pop up, which, if the town isn't careful, we're going to see a proliferation of these unregulated display boards that, most of which you see along highways as animated, some are very bright, some, you know. The whole point of the Dutchess County's letter, newsletter article is to provide municipalities with guidelines for regulating LED electronic display signs. They actually, the county is actually recommending that municipalities do not approve them, that they prohibit them because they're afraid of proliferation of them. But if municipalities want to allow them under certain conditions, the county does provide guidelines for how you might do that. So I think it's, it's going to be a broader discussion with the town board.
Is there a difference between billboards and signs?
Oh, yeah. Billboards are off-premise signs, as defined in the code. Which makes it, in a sense, even worse because they are strictly advertising signs, not identification signs. They're advertising stuff somewhere else in the town, or somewhere else in the state, or somewhere else in the world, or in the universe, who knows? But they're the new thing. And I think the town board really needs to think about updating the sign regulations for a number of reasons, but one being electronic display boards, LED signs. But that's, right now, we have the current issue of we have a certain timeframe within which to file an appeal to the zoning board of appeals,
Thirty days.
which is 60 days from the date that the interpretation was made.
Um, Mr. Chairman, one thing. We talk about station, when he talked about stationary there, I don't think he was talking about the sign being stationary.
What do you think he was talking about?
I think he was talking about, because I remember during the zoning board, the guy from that time, from the sign company, they were talking about it being sta, the LED being stationary, not moving, not an animated thing, it was stationary. So I think they're talking more like, when you read the code, it says, "artificial light which is not maintained stationary." He's saying it is stationary because it's like, and this is what, this is what I, the way I'm reading it, is that a sign will pop up, it'll be stationary as far as what's on there for that period of time. And then another sign will come up and it'll be not moving. I think that's what he meant. I don't think he meant that the sign was moving.
So one thing you have to look at is the potential for these signs to be not only moving, but animated. moving, but animated with, with different kinds of messages.
I, I want to stop you. I agree a hundred percent that we should do this. I'm just saying, I don't think that's what he meant. I don't think he meant that the sign itself is.
I don't know what the heck he meant. To tell you the truth.
Actually, going on Felix's interpretation, I, I have somewhat slightly, I mean, maybe the applicant wants a digital sign, but he'll have, the sign will be showing the name in a fixed manner, it's not like, it won't move around, I mean.
It's not just the name that he can show.
The name will be just hi- show up as a light.
I, I think I recall in the ZVA application that the applicant had provided information regarding the LED sign as being able to display other kinds of information that would be helpful to the community, or, you know. So that's not a static, um, display, that's a changing display.
No, I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, what I'm trying to do is respond to your theoretical take on it, Felix, as to what could happen if you were, if that was represented by the applicant and believed by the Building Inspector, and yet that's not what happens.
Right, no, no, I agree. I think we should challenge this, but I'm just saying, I don't think he meant that the sign moves.
And that, that, if I may, that's consistent, Debbie has forwarded to me the, the request that came from Timely Signs. And in that, uh, there is a number of points that were made, uh, that obviously that Mr. Petrus was responding to. Here's a salient one. "Any message displayed on our, quote, 'hopefully soon-to-be-approved digital display' will indeed be stationary and not perform any prohibited actions."
That, that's what he had said.
And so it goes to your point in, in terms of the discussion at the ZVA, which I haven't watched that meeting, but that certainly plays into that.
Well, again, it's, it's by nature of what these LED display signs actually are and what their potential to do is, is that.
It was to the point as to whether or not the sign itself is moving rather than.
Right, right. But again, the way the interpretation is written, who wouldn't even know that?
Understood.
That that's what he, what he meant. And because I think the, the whole take on it is so outrageously, um, out of whack with reality.
Yeah, I think the question is whether or not the board wants to appeal this, you know, and, uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, it'd be nice to have an interpretation.
You have to.
He did the interpretation.
No, I said, a firm, but see what they say. A firm interpretation. Because tomorrow, it's going to be another sign.
Yeah.
Got to appeal it to get there, I believe.
Yeah, so right now, we're dealing with this one particular sign. I, as I said, I will bring this to the Town Board as a suggestion for looking into the future of the town, to try to come up with more sensible regulations to regulate these things.
Yes.
But right now, we've got this particular sign in a gateway corridor, um, which, you know, if it were an LED sign that was going to remain stationary with simply the name of the bank, why? Why would you do that? Doesn't make sense.
I don't know, I agree.
So, anyway, let's, uh, let's get to the, the bottom line.
Motion.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion authorizing the planning board chair with the assistance of the planning board attorney, if you are willing, Dominic, to prepare and file an application with the ZVA challenging or appealing the zoning interpretation by Joel Petrus, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, on October third, 2024, regarding ZVA application number ZB twenty-four dash zero zero four, which is the Heritage Financial Credit Union sign at fourteen seventy-six Route 9D.
On, on that particular point, uh, just before, before you do, um, there are other attorneys within my office that have more expertise dealing with the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I would like to consult with them and potentially refer this to someone else within my firm, uh, if this is where the board intends to go. You should have the best advice in connection with appeals to the ZBA's, which is not something I normally do.
Good, good choice.
Okay.
So that, I believe, Jody.
So Jody moves it? Is there a second?
Second.
It was, it went like. Was that?
Kevin.
Kevin, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries seven to zero. All right. I'll tell you, this meeting has been like pulling teeth without, without the possi- without the, the needed anesthetic.
Yeah.
Yeah, her a motion to adjourn. Unless, unless anyone has anything else, um, for the benefit of the board or the community.
Jonathan, that's the problem with the way the codes are written. There's too much goosey goosey wiggle room for interpretation. This, to me, is very black and white, and I don't know how anybody could read it any other way. But again, three years ago, I don't know how anybody could have read, "You can't park cars on residential property." And that was straight up, and that got overridden. So unless it's very clear, and I don't know how you can make it more clear, you're always going to have this problem, whether it be parking in residential area, an LED sign, something else is going to come down the pike, I guarantee it, because there's too much room in what we said, and, and what's written. There's, there's too much wiggle room. An interpretation is interpretation. I could say, hey, you look fat, and someone takes that as an insult, but I could mean it PHAT, which means you're totally cool. You know what I'm saying?
That's how, that's how I'll take it.
There's that wiggle room there, Riley. Really, it's interpretation. How are you taking?
I got it, I got it, Jody. That was good.
So I use it, I use that as, that's the problem. It's not, I mean, I think I have logical common sense. I read it, I understand what that means, but somebody else maybe interprets it a different way.
Oh, that's why I think, I think if the Town Board agrees, we can fix this one particular aspect of the code, because there are a lot of communities that are updating their codes for these LED displays.
Well, the Town Board admitted it a few months back. They said, "When you, when you notice something, bring it to us," because some of this stuff is written, and everybody is on the same page, and they all assume, and we know what they say about assuming, they assume that it's so clear, how can it be a problem? But then it becomes a problem. So when you see it, we just have to bring it. And that, I tell anybody out in TV land, if you have a problem with something, you should be pointing it out to somebody so we can get it fixed. And that's the truth, because it doesn't, it doesn't affect you until it affects you, and it's in your backyard. And that's when all of a sudden, it becomes a problem. Everything is, becomes a problem to somebody at some point. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Very good points. Very good points. All right, anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, well, we already have a motion. Would you like to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right. As a, um, former chair of the board used to say, "Let's vote with our feet."
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, everybody.